Anna Smith.
I'm here, here.
Shade Fashakun.
Here.
Nikosi Nelson.
Here.
Paul Gautier. Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia.
Here.
Trish Bodie.
It is 6:17 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. Tonight, we have no one signed up to speak during tonight's meeting, so we'll move to our first agenda item. During the October 28, 2025 special meeting, the board interviewed four candidates to fill Place Six Board vacancy during closed session as permitted by Texas Government Code 551.074. On behalf of the board, I'd like to extend our sincere appreciation to all the candidates who took the time to meet with us and their willingness to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees. Board members, do you have a motion to fill the Place Six Board vacancy?
I move to approve Laura Marquez to fill the Place Six vacancy on the Board of Trustees until the next Board Trustee election in November 2026.
I second.
I have a motion from Nikosi, a second from Gloria. Any discussion? All in favor? Six eyes, motion passes. Congratulations, Laura Marquez. Wait, five. Wait. Oh my goodness, y'all. One, two. Let's do it again. Five. Five eyes, motion passes. Oh my Lord, y'all. We're gonna get through this. Congratulations, Laura.
Board members, we will now move to four A. Discussion of the 2026-2027 Budget Development, including Leander ISD Cost Analysis Data and Contracted Reviews of the District.
All right, good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board of Trustees. Dr. Garing. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk. We're gonna talk a little bit about 26-27 budget. And then we're gonna show you some data set for our district that a lot of it you've seen before, but now we're putting it all in one place. And so, kind of before we start tonight, I want to share just a little story. Small one. So, 2012, my wife and I took the kids to visit some friends in Phoenix, Arizona. We took them to the Grand Canyon. So, we went to the edge, looked at the Grand Canyon. He had the little kids, about all we were gonna do, and spent the day there and had a beautiful time. And so, 2000 or May, in June is last year, I went back to the Grand Canyon and I hiked it from the Bright Angel Trail all the way to the north rim, so south rim to north rim. And I liked it so much, I went back the next month and did it again. I did South Cabeau Trail to the North Cabeau Trail. And it was beautiful. It was, I mean, it was wow. I mean, it was so surreal and just, it was very impressive. So, but tonight, I want us to have this discussion like you're my family. And we're just going to the Grand Canyon and we're just looking at the edge of the rim. We're not going delve deep into the canyon. We're not going to walk the 24 miles and get to see all the awe-inspiring beauty of it. It is, but it's still pretty beautiful from just going to the edge and looking at the top, the big view. And so, this is what a lot of this data is for tonight. So, I appreciate the opportunity to share this with you and looking forward to walking everybody through this and definitely if there are any questions. So, I just want to take a few moments of it just as we begin, just to kind of share that story because I really thought it was important that, you know, I appreciated the canyon more by starting at the top and then seeing, and then as the years progressed, going down deeper and seeing it from different trails and different angles and just seeing the different levels of beautiness of it.
Pete, as you're, as you're, I don't, can't hear myself. As you go through the discussion, would you just tell us, like, your assumptions? Like, does it assume the projections that PASA had? Did it assume if we're gonna do any rezoning of buildings or what? So, just as we're moving, so we understand, like, what edge we're at?
Okay.
And that would be helpful. Because I really don't have a lot of questions, so I just want to hear right now, but that helps.
Okay, yeah, most of this, and I'll clarify as we go through, most of it is just no assumptions that we have. I mean, it just, this is the data. This is where we're at. But if there are anything different, I'll definitely make sure I point that out. So, our purpose tonight is to provide an updated 26-27 budget, including a review of the key data and finding some recent studies currently being evaluated. So, I wanted to start out, the main thing that we always try to be is student-centered and data-informed. And so, that's where we find that balance. I don't like to make a lot of data-driven decisions because that takes a student centerpiece out of it. Data-driven can, has its place. I just, I'm not a firm believer that it's, the number one place is in education. It's need to be balanced that between student-centered and being data-informed. You've seen this slide before, so we'll jump right to the middle. You know, this is current year 25-26. We're in the revise, recalibrate. This is where we're at. We are looking at revenue. We are having discussions on implementing appropriate recommendations from our program, reviewing staffing guidelines, reviewing staffing, decreasing expenditures. You know, how do we take all that in a big, you know, in the big picture? And how do we have these, you know, we're having these robust discussions in what kind of revenues we have. And I'm gonna apologize upfront. I'm having allergies or whatever, so I will take a lot of sips of water tonight. And my voice is very deep. I feel like very manly tonight. It is not the, I don't know if this is, it sounds that way to you guys, but to me, it sounds a lot different, so. And then as we begin of the 26, you know, as we've developed that, then next year, we'll continue to work on the implementation of student programs focused on our staffing guidelines, et cetera, alignment and our initiatives. So, there's a lot of things that we are working on and we're attacking it, or if you want to call it that, from very many different angles. I mean, we're a very complex organization. I mean, you have 6,000 employees, 42,000, approximately 1,000 students. Decisions that we make, you know, what kind of master schedules we have, what kind of position, what's our philosophy? Is our philosophy to have more teachers and less IAs? Is it to have more IAs and less teachers? I mean, there's all these conversations that are, we have to take, consider and take into consideration and how we develop, what kind of, you know, how we are gonna be staffed, what our expectations are, what are, you know, what do we want our students outcome to be and student achieve? So, a lot of moving parts. And it's not just expenses, it's also revenues. We're also looking at, you know, I think we talked about land sales. We've talked about advertising. We've talked about, you know, increasing attendance. So, a lot of these, you know, a lot of these conversations are gonna be very multi-variable and multifaceted. So, just to start, kind of what Trish had mentioned earlier is our pre-assumptions, what we started with, with our budget. And I'll emphasize that there's any other different assumptions on any other data sets. But when we did the 25-26 budget, we used the 24-25 population, you know, PASA, the reduced growth model of 42,278 kids. Our students, we did our budget at 98% of payroll. There was no pay increase included. We did end doing a pay raise that was funded from the state for certain teachers in years four, three and plus. TASB did a pay study. And as we build this budget, we have put in about, we put in a million. We know there were about 400,000 in stipends last year that didn't, were not put in into this TASB pay study. So, we're trying to build room for that. And every year, TASB typically does an update. And so, we're just trying to build. It's not for Rachel to think she has to spend a million of that. It's just that we're trying to put a number in there as a placeholder. Some funding for the, continue with the police department. We have the funds for the, open the early childhood center. And then we are trying to meet a budget parameter of a deficit of no larger than 1.5%, which is different than the current year. We've had it 4.5% and the years prior it was about 3. So, we've had some things that have changed since we've started this, building the 26-27 budget. We got a PASA report about last meeting. So, the new number is now 41,841, not the 42,278. So, we are 437 students less. And that is about $4 million, give or take, in our revenues. You notice in some of the next slides, I'll show you where that comes in, into play. And then one thing, we haven't had any conversations yet, or significant conversations, we haven't had any conversations about the Health Service Fund or health insurance for our staff. Typically, in the past, we had increased our monthly contribution by $50 a month. It's about $2.4 million, $2.5 million a year. That's what that equates to. So, we haven't had those conversations and we will begin having those conversations in this budget, in this development. But I just want to point out, we really haven't had any conversations. So, that may be something that does, or it will something that comes up in the future. So, if you look at our slides here, the column on the left with the yellow, that was 8 million last time. Now, it's 12 because of using the new PASA numbers of 471 students less, I think is what that number was. So, I said it's about 4 million. So, that's the difference, the delta between the eight and the 12. And then you go out a year, 27, 28, that 12. All things being equal, the assumptions are, you know, as Trish mentioned earlier, the assumptions we have in here is we have the new facilities being opened. If you, if we have less students, right? Obviously, the assumption would be, it's not built in this budget model, but the assumption would be, when we use the new numbers and HR gets those new numbers and they're lower, some campuses may lose a teacher or two here and there. That is not reflected in these numbers. Okay, that is, this is strictly based on the projected enrollment. The expenditures on the teaching and other staff is not, none of those reductions are in here because we don't know what they are until we can get the data at a grade level. And right now, we don't have the data. We just have the bottom line. So, as that comes out a little bit later, we'll be able to have those conversations and get a better estimate of what we think. If there's any staffing, based on our staffing guidelines or if there's any adjustments to our staffing guidelines, what that will do to these expenditure numbers that are in this, in these, in this slide right here. So, as we look at going forward, we've completed some studies. We're still digesting a lot of this information, but we've been, so tonight, we're gonna focus on kind of the first bullet. It's just an internal cost review, really the first chapter. It's just a report that was developed for a neighboring district, Austin ISD. I'll walk you through all the methodologies in there. It's just a cut and paste of what that they did, and I put our numbers in it. So, we may agree or disagree or not like the calculation. It's not, I just did it because that was what the report was done for Austin ISD. Then I can explain to you what the difference is and what that leads to and why any of our numbers that we've showed have been a little different, higher or lower. But just to be consistent, this is what that report was done. So, it shows you different methodology. Then easily, then we can break into the detailed pieces. We've also did a study from Stetson and Associates, reviewed our, the title of the review, our staffing practice for students with disabilities. Basically, it looked at our special education program. The MoKasey did an analysis and study for us on the secondary master schedule staffing study. In September, Gibson Consulting, our internal auditor, provided you a report and discussion on the academic program management internal audit report. And then we just received, we're still in draft form of the Texas Association of Schools. Sorry, I should say school boards. My apologies, not school business. I got too much Tasbo in my head. That's the central office staffing review. And so, that one just looked at central office by itself, very, so it, you know, if you've read it or when the final version comes out, you know, it's just important to realize it's looking at something completely by itself. And I think in that report, it's very clear. In the first page or so, it says, you know, there are different philosophies, different philosophies amongst districts. And some districts may have positions at central office and some districts may have them housed at campuses. So, when just looking at something by itself, you may not get the best picture of the full picture. You know, you may be at the top of the canyon and it looks beautiful, but when you're down walking through it, you see a whole different part of it. So, it's just important to, I felt it was important to point that out, that it is very, very by itself. And so, it doesn't take the whole district as a body of, it's just, it doesn't, it may, you may look at that and just get stuck on this one little piece and you may come up with an incorrect conclusion.
Pete, just as we're going through this, did any of these studies inform each other? Are these all isolated and we kind of have to keep doing work on it?
Well, they were all done separate from one another. They had some commonalities. I know Stetson, I think Gibson.
I'm sorry, because I know we're gonna have, I wanted you to get through it. I don't need a long, I just want to make sure I understand. So, if, let's say, central office, there's recommendation on staffing, that doesn't mean it's necessarily in the internal cost. There's in, if there's MoKasey, I don't know, on the master schedule making, that's not gonna be in the internal cost? Like, the recommendations of those things are not in any of?
Yeah. The internal cost is really big-picture-esque. I mean, it's just doing some calculations and then looking at some of our data. And then there's some other data that we added in there. Stetson was specific to special education. Walked through the campuses, looked at the programs, gave a recommendation, you know, that basically said, you know, hey, from a campus level, things look fairly decent. Now, there's some opportunities at central office or somewhere in between campus and central office for some service-type, you know, diagnostician positions and some other, you know, position they felt that we maybe need to look at to bolster that, to help support each of those campuses and special education programs. MoKasey would just kind of give you, here's different ways of scheduling and this is kind of what the FTEs are. And you can kind of plug and play and where you feel you're happy at and kind of figure out how much, how much staff that would be. And then again, Gibson, I'm not gonna talk about this because you just had a report on it. And then the central office one kind of compared us two ways, broke us down into departments and it compared us based on the TASB salary survey that is voluntary that districts do. And all the peer districts in that report did participate in that. And then at the bottom of each section, it takes the PMS data that are submitted through the Public Education Information Management System and it compares. And so, each, there's pros and cons to each way. Again, the salary is, a survey is voluntary and depends on who's entering the data, depends on how accurate the data may or may not be or, and then TASB has to figure out, do these positions really equate to one another? So, they have that, and they point out if, even though they excluded. And then on the PMS, as much as we try to standardize, you can, three people can read the PMS thing and they could come up with three different ways of coding some of these positions. And so, that may show up as a little bit different. So, it does, it does a pretty good job. I think they're all very well put together in their respective areas. There are some areas, if you want to look at it as like a Venn diagram, there are some areas that overlap that show some consistent opportunities to look, to dig a little deeper. And that's what we're in the process at right now. Like, and we just, we've got, got these. And some of them, again, in draft form. So, we're taking them, digesting them and trying to, as we have these robust discussions, really look at, you know, what do we want to be? How do we want to continue to be? And how does that change in that process look? And then use some of this data to help us, again, remain student-centered but just be data-informed. So, this slide right here just kind of briefly talks about the, some costs done, that we've already reported the numbers on that Jeremy and his team has done in earlier meetings. But the school closure consolidation, if you were to do three campuses, it's about 4.15 million, 1.3 million each, give or take. Low-enroll campus staffing formula at six campuses is 1.77. So, it's about just under $300,000 per campus, assuming. Now, the assumption on that was most of those are looking at it as elementary schools. I think middle school could be a little bit higher just because they're staffed a little differently. Although, they have more counselors. They may have more APs than what an elementary does. And then the optimized secondary master scheduling, the MoKasey report, special education review from Stetson and Associates, and then the central office instructional support, both is the Gibson internal audit. Those are all, we're still processing. We're looking at, we're delving into them. We're taking, as we go through these, have these conversations, we're just trying to figure out exactly where we are. Again, where we are, where we want to be and where we're going. And so, in copying what the report that was done for Austin ISD, we did our, the only thing that's different is I had to pick the peer districts that matched us. And so, we looked at Clear Creek, Keller, Leander, Lewisville, Plano and Round Rock. And so, some of the things that just to mention on here is most of our enrollment is fairly similar. I mean, Keller's about 10,000 students less than most of them, but for the most part, they're all fairly similar. If you look at us, we have of the, you know, the six districts, we have the lowest, low socioeconomic status. We're at 20%. Most of the districts are in the mid-30s, mid to upper 30s. Now, the student-staff ratio, which is just basically taking your total staff or your number of students and divide by your total staff, every position. So, 7.9 is the highest, the lowest is 7.4. We're right, we're in that, right in that middle range of 7.6. And then the student-teacher ratio, I'll just point out, you know, Clear Creek, their model is very much less teachers, more para, more IAs. That's their model. So, it will show on that slide. But most of them are 13.9, 13.9, 13.1, 14 and 14. So, what's interesting is, I'm giving you information that's from 23-24. Probably every district up there is having similar conversations right now. And I don't know if that data really gives us the best picture because we're all having conversations about, we're having to change how we model. We're all losing students. We're all, you know, dealing with budgetary constraints. And so, again, take this information for what it's worth. It's not the end-all be-all, but it does kind of give you an idea, even in 23-24, of where we were and what other districts are. Kind of, you can kind of extrapolate. You can, you know, make your own assumptions, but it's just, we're all going through this. And two years from now, if we look back at 25, 26, 26, 27, these numbers are gonna look a lot different for everybody. And I don't know which way everybody's gonna go and what they feel is best for their respective districts. So, the intent of this was just to give us an idea to look at. The general fund expenditures per student, would you notice of these, we are the second lowest of the revenue per student. We're at 9,978. Clear Creek is considerably lower, just at 90, just below 9,400. And then all the other districts are over 10,500. So, a lot of that is just based on, I mean, it'll be upfront just because of betting at five different districts. You know, I came from Mesquite ISD, 2,500 less kids than we have, $18 million more. They're 80% low socioeconomic. We've got a lot of money through state comp ed formulas, which makes your WADA higher, which makes your funding higher. So, it's just a lot of it is demographic. So, I mean, the funding piece is tied to that. So, it doesn't surprise me that they're higher. It's not that they're doing anything different than we are. It's just their demographics and the way the school funding formulas work, they get a little more WADA or weights in that and that equates to more funding for them. Then the bottom part is the percent of general fund expenditures on instruction. So, of the budget, how much do we spend on instruction? And so, you know, we spend 65.5%, which is actually the second highest of the six districts or peer districts that we're looking at. So, again, I think that reiterates the Leander ISD model and that instruction is what drives us. We are student-centered and so, most of our money, our funding that we have is gonna be allocated towards student instruction. And this graph or this table kind of reiterates and supports that. Next graph here is our, this is our student enrollment district-wide going up to 24, 25. Now, one thing I do want to point out, a lot of these graphs go through 23, 24, 24, 25. I've got a couple of slides toward the end where I really point out, hey, we did some budget cuts in the spring of 25 that are not reflected because we're not looking at 26, 25, 26. This is going through 24, 25. So, I want just, you know, in a couple of the report, I think I have asterisks in there and I've put on there, you know, how much positions those were, how much we reduced by. So, it would, it would change. So, just because we going one way doesn't mean that we can't adjust midstream, and we did in last spring. So, if you look at 18, 19, just under 40,000 students. So if you look at 18, 19, just under 40,000 students, 24, 25 was 42,608, looked like we're on a good trend, right, slowly heading up. And then 20, 25, 26 came about, and we went down to 42, 448, and then next year, we're looking at 42, 278. So, we're looking at going down about 200 students of reality, and then 200 lower next year. So, we're kind of, if you look at this graph, if you graph it out, we're kind of, kind of steady, and then it looks like we're starting to dip a little bit, that could change to go up, but for the next year or two, it looks like, or this year, next year, unless something were to change, we are losing about 200 students, give or take, each year. And just because you lose 200 students, you can't just say, oh, well, divide by 20, we're gonna lose 10 teachers. Doesn't really work that way, depends on where you lose them at, okay? Because if you lose one campus, loses five kids each, and different grade levels, you're still gonna have the same number of teachers that you had. And so now you lost revenue, but your expenditures are constant, so, you know, just be very careful, just because you go down 200 doesn't, sometimes it does mean you can reduce the teaching staff depending on where they are, and sometimes it doesn't, it just depends on where those students are, or, or where they were, and where they, what campus, if it's all one area. So this next, next graph, graph, plot, scatter plot, whatever you want to call this one, this is a, so this is our, all of our elementary campuses, and so, the yellow dots are, got an A in accountability, the red dots are the B, C is the, kind of like dark green, and then the light blue, or mid-blue is, are the D campuses. So the only reason I wanted to really mention, this is through 23, 24, so it's not, you know, we have one more year of data, it's not the most up-to-date, but the one thing I did want to just point it out is, no matter if the campus is big, or the campus is small, we have a wide variety of all accountability ratings throughout all sizes of our district. And so, you know, I know as we listen to the public comments before, and there's, you know, a lot of, there's pros and cons, ideally, Dr. Garing did a very good job of saying, you know, we really do a good job of, of having 800-size elementary schools. And that's ideal, we, we, I mean, it's ideal for us, it's our model, we are very successful at it, but, just because, for other reasons, based on demographic changes, based on enrollment, some of our campuses have gotten smaller, and so, there's no cause and effect, you know, the biggest correlation factor on here would probably be low socioeconomic status, it was not gonna be the size of the campus, so. And I just say that as correlation, I'm not, I'm not, that's not a diehard, I know what the R squared is on that one, but it's, it's a pretty safe assumption. So this next slide is the same thing, it's just middle schools. So, you know, we have two A middle schools, one is the largest, one is in the middle, and all the smallest up through the second largest are all Bs, so. And one thing you'll notice, even taking out the accountability piece, is just, as these, as you go up from an elementary school, you know, we average, I believe, 695 is coming up here, our middle schools are about 1,000, 1,100, and then our high schools become 2,000. As you get more students, it's easier to, you know, a smaller campus, two or three students can affect an accountability rating based on your student population, and that is reflected, you'll see as we get bigger, our accountability actually gets higher, just because you have more students, that can affect one certain student population that, that affects that. And then the same thing for high school, you know, we have six high schools, five As in 23, 24, and you have one B, and the B is right in the middle. So, the smallest one is, is an A, and the largest one is an A, so, and that's, again, more based on size than anything. So let's look at the enrollments from, is our high schools, we'll go through each campus level here in a minute. So the high schools, you have, you know, Leander High School, you know, they are down 71 students from 23, 24, and 24, 25, but they, their, you know, per pupil spending was 7,068 last year, or 23, 24, and 24, 25 was 7,581. Now, we gave a 2% raise in 24, 25, and then the campus did go down 71 students, so you take those two things into consideration, it's gonna make the per pupil cost, on paper, higher. And then each of those teachers went up, you know, they got a pay grade, plus they went up a, I hate to say step, but they went up one more level on the hiring schedule, is that the right way to say that? Okay, all right, I have my HR person right here, make sure I say that right. You can look at each of the campuses, you know, Cedar Park, they went up 217 kids, and their per pupil, or their per student allocation was within $30 of what it was a year prior. Vista Ridge, you know, excuse me, lost 137 students, and their cost went up about 100, 150. It's not that their cost went up, just now you're just dividing a higher cost under less, or less number of students. Same thing, you look at Rouse, Vandergrift, and Glen, you know, respectively, so overall, for the 24, 25, we went up 43 students. But it was down 71 at Leander, up, you know, 217 at Cedar Park, down 137 at Vista Ridge, up 224 at Rouse, down 85 at Vandergrift, and down 105 at Glen High School. So as you look at those, so I guess the point, what I want to really emphasize is, when you look at the spend per student, you know, from my perspective in the CFO role, I don't really look, we don't spend a lot of time looking at spend per student, per campus. It's really more, for me, it's more the district as a whole, because we have a lot of, and you'll see it at the elementary schools, we go to the, you know, two slides from now, our costs are gonna be the same, it's really just a matter of where do we house different programs. So one elementary school may look, wow, you're, you're really low, and you're really efficient, we heard that quite a bit, but the reality of the situation is, they were pretty much all regular rated programs, there wasn't, and then the other elementaries have dual language pre-K, they have pre-K, they have all these other programs that cost a little bit more. And so when you take into consideration, or if you have two of those programs, your cost per student is gonna be higher, but the district doesn't, if you move them all around, the bottom line for the district doesn't change. But it just depends on how it's housed, and so it's, it's important part, a piece that I, I just want to make sure we, 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 we understand that in the data. So here's the middle schools, again, we were up, total between that, that group was 52 students. Same thing, I don't, unless you're the one, the specific one you really want me to go to, I'm not, I won't spend a whole lot of time, because it's very similar to the high school. But as you can see, you know, some campuses went up, some went down, but their, their cost per students, there really wasn't any of these that I would say was, was a drastic change. I mean, I think Danielson was the most, just under 200, but most of them were, were fairly close to each other. Henry was the other one that was fairly, and those, those two, you know, have dual language, so. But other than that, you know, there was nothing that I, that, you know, that I, when I looked at this, that really made it, anything I would consider, you know, an anomaly, or anything that warranted further discussion. So the next two slides, because we have a lot of elementary schools, I just, unless you wanted a font size of three, I couldn't get them on one slide, so. So if you look at all these, you know, so there's a couple of things, we'll have to go to the key here, but, again, I want to go back to what I mentioned earlier, because, you know, you'll see one or two campuses on here that are a lot higher than others, but it's not because they're efficient or inefficient, has nothing, it has, they have, it has a lot to do with the number of students they have on their campus and the special programs that they have. And I'm talking about Fabian, because it does jump off the page a little bit, but it has, you know, they had T1 in 23, 24, dual language, pre-K, and regular pre-K, and they lost 63 students, so, and you only have 400, and you start, and you lose 60, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's a pretty decent percent, it can make that, you know, that 8,433 become 10,604 pretty quick, I mean, because you lost 60 out of 400 kids, that's a fairly, a decent high level percent, but it doesn't mean that that campus is inefficient. Our students housed at Fabian, those, you know, dual language, pre-K, or pre-K, wherever they're moved to, actually, I'll be, I would make the argument, it may look, that campus, it may look high, but it costs us less because we are maximizing the economies of scales by having certain students be in just one or two areas where we can maximize the economies and have a full class, as opposed to having it at every campus and only having one teacher and having a much smaller number of students. So every district goes through these conversations, every, you know, every few years on many, many programs. You know, what is the best way to serve the students based on need? And then unfortunately, in our day and age, the bigger question is sort of become based on budget constraints, unfortunately. I remember that used to be like the third or fourth tier, you know, and unfortunately, that's getting moved up, and it's frustrating, but that's, that's where we are, not just Leander, that's where every Texas school district is in that boat. We have those conversations, what's the best way to serve our students? And sometimes clustering or grouping is, is the best way to maximize the, you know, the number of teachers and staff that we can have, and so, that's what we do with pre-K, dual language pre-K, we have it, you know, we had IB at the elementary, and now we have it at the high schools, our high school. And all those programs, we have to figure out what is the best way to serve our students based on the most way to maximize the economies of scale and with the budget that we have. And so it's not anything new, so I just want to make sure we fully understand, the, the total cost doesn't change, it's just where do we, how do we, when you're looking at a campus, the only, only really thing that changes is that, the only thing that you would save on anything is, is your fixed cost, and that's your, your front office and your principal, AP, librarian, nurse counselor, the 1.3 million dollars that Jeremy has talked about numerous times, or is it 1.1? Three? Okay, good, I should've gone with my gut, so, 1.3, so that's, that's the fixed cost amongst your campus at an elementary school. And then here's the rest of our elementary campuses. Now, in the business office, or finance side, we go like organization code, that's the, if you're wondering what rhyme or reason these, these numbers are in, it was, the first elementary school you build is 101, the second one is 102, and that's the number that, that's how we sort things in our world. We didn't do it alphabetically, you know, so if you're wondering, what on earth do these order in, that's, that's the order, it's just by the org code, there's no reason. So, just in case you're wondering, T1 is Title I, that's the title, the, the legend on there. Pre-K is, PK is pre-K, not penalty kick. DL is dual language, dual language pre-K, and you know, you have all that, all that information is on there, and IB. So this is a, just kind of a pictograph, if you will, of our district. So the dark red is a negative 25% enrollment change, and then the dark blue is 25, positive 25% enrollment change. So if you look at our district, this has been explained many times by Passa in presentations prior, the southern campuses, as you can see, most of those are, are dark red. That's not anything that is, is new to anybody who's been paying attention in our board meetings, who's been listening or to the board, we've had this discussion, Passa has mentioned it, you know, numerous times. You go to the Cedar Park area, the middle range, you kind of got your little yellow, kind of fairly, a little bit, some are red, some are yellow, a little bit of blue, some went up a little bit, some went down a little bit, some are right in the middle. Then on your northern side, you do have, the one on the north in the red, I feel quite comfortable, just because we opened a new campus and some of the students moved around, but most of those are in the bluer area, that's kind of, like I said, nothing new to anybody here, that's where the growth is in the district. So this slide, if you've got average students per campus, you look at our elementary schools, you just say, hey, look at everybody, Clear Creek, Keller, Louisville, Plano, Round Rock, Leander, hey, we're right, yeah, we're 655, right? We're four below Clear Creek, we're looking great, we're pretty solid. And it's an average, so we all know there's really no such thing as an average, all right? I mean, I read this great book, I'm just gonna delve into 22nd story real quick. The military back in the day built all their military aircraft, because the average pilot was five foot seven. And then one general came into play a couple of years later, and he's like, looked at the data, not one pilot was five foot seven. So they were all complaining, they were having to put pillows in their pilot seats because they were too short, or they were trying to push it back, so now, hence, we have adjusted seats in the aircraft of our military, so our pilots can fit right, so they can fly the planes to the best of their ability, so. That's kind of what's in an average, and we're gonna show you, look at this next slide, but if you break apart our campuses by north, south, and central, the north campuses average about 755 is our, our size, based on 23, 24. Our central campuses are 609, our south campus is about 485. And it's just because of the, the demographics of our enrollment of, of our, our district. The numbers, well, the red dots are the cost per student for that, average for that group, so, 65, 78, 69, 16, and then 73, 67. It's not, again, that the campuses are any more efficient, there's less number of students to cover the fixed cost of a campus, because all those campuses there have a principal, an AP, a counselor, a librarian, and a nurse, and a front office staff. Everything else is staff based on programmatic need or grade level students. So those, those numbers all fluctuate. The, the main fixed cost in that building that we talked about is 1.3 million, are those costs, and as you look at the smaller campuses, they're gonna look higher just because they have less number of students to divide that over. And we'll look at, just pull out about south, just because of, just a greater, I'm gonna skip this slide just because the next slide has the, the same information in graph form. So you can see those campuses from 2010, 11, basically, and they've all decreased, you know, from 848 to 503, 746 to, you know, 417, 570 to 388, and then the 667, you know, the blue campus, River Ridge, you know, they went up for four years, and then it's kind of steady, you know, gone down from 667 to 370. So that's nothing new, that's not, that's data we've all looked at before. Now we'll look at the middle schools, same thing, you were right there, we're basically tied with Keller for having an average middle school of 1,092. And then you look at the breakdown of north, central, and south, 60, you know, 1151, 1181, and 822, the cost 65, 54, 61, 35, and 7,300. Again, it's just, it's just based on the fixed cost and the less students. The high schools, you know, our average is 2,296, again, through 23, 24, pretty much about average, you got Louisville, you got the big high school concept, 32, 67, which may or may not be one physical building, I don't know, you know, one district I was at, we had 3,000, or we had 3,900, but it was, you had a ninth grade campus with 1,100 kids, and you had 2,800 kids up to 10 through 12 center, so. TEA counts that as one campus, so just, you know, it doesn't mean there's 4,000 kids on that campus, it just, they haven't broken out in different facilities, but either way, all things being equal, we're at 2,300, which is about that average. And then if you break it down, this is what's interesting on this group is, there's not a whole lot of difference in size, 21, 22, 22, 78, 25, 22. And the cost actually go, you know, the 66, 68 for the, the north, which tends to be a little smaller, 21, 22, your central is a little bit less, and it's 22, 78, and then Vandergrift is even lower, but it's got more students to divide the fixed cost over, so that's, shouldn't be anything surprising in that graph, if you pay, if we listen to the, the other ones, as you get more students, that number goes down regardless, just because of, you know, you're, you're spreading a fixed cost over more students. So I'm gonna walk you through this calculation, because this is not really a calculation that Pete Poppy would use, okay? So, but it's just, it was, and it was a calculation that the consulting firm used, and from a consultant standpoint, it makes sense, you're just looking at the data of a district or the entity that contracted with you, and you're just trying to find areas that jump out, so that district or your client can do some further analysis, so that's really what this is. So what they do is they say, okay, hey, let's look at all the elementary schools with less than 500 students, what is their average per pupil cost? And then just look at that compared to the, the average per pupil cost for campuses that are over 500. And let's take the difference, the delta, it's 1,166, multiply by the number of kids that are in a campus less than 500, 3,112, and it gives you estimated savings of 3.6 million dollars. It's, it's a very methodical, average, it's, again, it's the, it's the, it's the five foot seven average pilot, you know, size for your aircraft, okay? Now, do you look at the bottom, you know, we've given you these numbers before, and we've calculated them, a little harder, harder, harder numbers, it's, it's about, really about 4.1 million for us, but you can look at it from a ballpark, it gets you fairly close, it does bring up something that, that worth looking at. And the next one below is the same thing for the middle school, our middle schools, shows about a million, you know, we're about 1.3, that's what we're using at elementary schools, probably a little bit higher than that at a middle school, just because there's more APs, more counselors, et cetera, but, it, it gives you enough to just make it worth your, it's easy to identify, you know, okay, well, hey, this looks this way, let's look a little deeper, and that's really all that is for, so. Again, just because this number, 3.6, doesn't exactly match the 4.1, I wouldn't expect it to, nor should it, this is just a very high-level average, and then we have done some analysis. Again, this report was done for Austin ISD, when Austin did their data, their numbers for their specific campuses came back different than this one as well. So it's, again, the data we look at is just more specific, more detailed, but, far as ballpark, it gets you in the right, right, right area. All right, this next slide, now, I've mentioned it before, and it's on the slide, and it's on the next slide, this is through 24, 25, so this does not show, nor does it reflect any of the reductions in staff that we did this last spring, because we didn't, 26, 25, 26 isn't on this graph. So this is, the, the blues at the bottom are the teaching staff. The next level blue is your professional support, your green, dark green is your education aides, your light green is your auxiliary staff, your administration is the, the light orange, and then your admin, administration at your campus level is the darker orange on the top. So the red line, which we got this from Forecast 5, and when you pull it, it's a canned report, and I could not tell it to put the red line in the legend, so I will make sure that I point So I will make sure that I point it out. But the red line just tells you, here's your total staff to, to student ratio. And so if you look at this, and we had this, we had that number earlier. But if you look at, so I don't really try to look at 2011 very much. I really looked more at 2012. You recall 2011, we, public education was cut by $5.4 billion from the state legislature after the finances stuff in 2007, 2009. And the federal monies ran out. They, they plugged it in that hole to get us to 2009, 2011. 2011 came, the state didn't have any money. And so districts cut, you know, we went through, you know, fat, muscle, bone, you know? I mean, we, we went as deep as you could go. So I really kind of looked more at 2012. That's probably as lean as a campus would, district would ever want. And they wouldn't ever want to be, but that was as, probably as lean as they could be and still function. And so at that point, you know, we were about eight. I think we're eight, 8.0. And we were, so for every eight students, we had one staff. And that staff was every category, but we had one staff. And we maintained that for about four or five years. 2012, sorry, eight years. 2012, all the way to about 2020. We dipped a little, went back up, but we were right at about 15. 2021, we dropped to seven and a half. We went back up in 2023, back up to eight. And then as we started in 2023, we started to dip down again. So let's look at that. What does that mean? Does that mean we added more staff? Well, maybe it could. But also, we know our student counts have been, for the last two years, have shown up, the kids that showed up in school were 2, 3, 400, 600 kids less than what we had budgeted for. Now, I'm going to put Rachel on the spot just because she's sitting next to me. But when we do our staffing, we staff on the numbers we get from PASA and we staff that's in the spring. We base on numbers. Rachel and any principal will tell you, they want to hire as many people as they can in that spring. And so we hire in the spring, right? We want the blue chips, right? We want the top athletes. We want the best that we can get, you know? So we staff for it. And then low and behold, 400 kids less show up in August. We're not going to let the staff go. That's not how districts operate. And so we keep those staff on. And now maybe we get a vacancy or two if something happens. We don't fill it. And Rachel and her staff, and they did do a fabulous job of, of trying to, to do that. You know, and occasionally back in the day, it wasn't really a big issue for Leander because we knew, no matter what we budgeted, she's probably still going to have another 100 or 200, 300 kids show up in August, you know? And if you have the numbers. And so now, between hiring, maybe some ESAR positions that, that, that ESAR funding went away and we wanted to keep those because we had some specific student needs. You know, Leaf has helped out with some of those positions. Some of those positions we brought to the board and kept in our budget. And then you have the number of students not showing up. We're a year behind. It takes us a year to play catch up on that. So, and so when you look at it on graph, it's always going to show up looking like that. So I think as long as you have an understanding of really what that red line means, it could mean a bunch of stuff. I mean, it couldn't, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we added more staff and just weren't paying attention. It could mean we added staff based on the best information we had, which was our PASA numbers, PASA numbers. And then for whatever reason, 400 kids didn't show up more. And we've had it just that twice in the last three years. And you know, we had the, that year after COVID, 22, 23, we had to make a 400 something student adjustment, if I remember top of my, 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 oh, 1,500 students, sorry. And then this year, we did another 400. So a lot of things have changed since 2012 when it comes to public education and students and number of kids in the system, a number of kids in the community, and, and different kind of vouchers coming up next year. You have charters moving into the air. So a lot of these different dynamics, again, it's a very, very multi-variable scenario. You have to look at, it's not just one thing. It's, you have to look at three or four different levels of, of how do we, how does this get here? So typically, for any public entity, particularly a school, you're always going to be kind of playing catch up for one year. Occasionally, it works the other way. You do all your staffing and 200 more kids show up. Now, with that, that also creates some, some issues. Because now you got to, depending if you can't, if you can't make it work, sometimes you have to hire some staff or some teaching staff. And if you're a teacher and you don't have a job in August, sometimes that's, you know, that may not be the blue chipper, right? It may not be the best, the best position out there. Maybe someone that's, maybe it's a new person that's graduated late, you know? I mean, so you made a little more work. But no one likes to have to hire someone in August. I mean, it's, every now and then you get lucky, you know, someone moves in and they were a rock star teacher somewhere and, you know, their, their spouse got relocated and it works out great. But is this in August? No one likes to have to, it's, it's, it's a tough, tough, tough position. But we have great systems in place. We help that staff, you know, all of our staff, new hires, et cetera. But no one likes to be in a position to have to hire, filling it in, in, late in the summer.
And also, something we've talked about before is even though our student enrollment might not be, might be decreasing or might not be growing as expected, the needs of the students that we have has already gone, has also gone up as well.
Great point. And I failed to mention that. But yes, as you look at, one of the audits pointed out or reviews, the SPED audit, that was, yeah. Our SPED population increases, I want to say about 6.6% a year. More of our students are being identified for special education services. You also have our, even though our free reduce on paper, it may look fairly flat, but it does, it does fluctuate. We have a much more, the, the diagnosis of our special needs students have changed quite a bit between the, the three main categories. I won't delve into that, but our demographics have changed. The needs of our students have changed. Whether it's an area, you know, we have bilingual. You have ESL. I mean, a lot of those areas, a lot of the, the, a lot of the specific categories or needs of our students have changed a lot since 2012. And I expect 10 years from now, you look back and say, well, they changed a lot since 2025 and 2035, when you have this conversation. But that is always going to be, just, that's just a reality of, of, but it's important. And I appreciate you bringing that up because it is important. Because we're not, we don't have the same, the student makeup is different now than it was in 2012.
I just want to add, y'all really dig into that special education audit report because it really goes into our tier one model and how it is costing us more money because we're over, you know, we're identifying students that need support. But I bring this up because we have a PLC conference coming up and I really would love for y'all to dig into that report because it does tie into some of the stuff we're doing with our board goals and stuff.
And then our, our last graph, I think this is our board president's favorite graph. So if you look at, again, it's the same year as, as before. I'm not going to spend time looking at 2011. But look at 2012, student teacher ratio. We were 15.4 and that was probably as lean as, as you'd ever want to be. It was probably too lean. But we maintain that, kind of stepped it down a little bit. And then we've kind of continued to gone down. Again, the same reasons of the staff to student ratio. It's, it's ESAR funds, and then we kept some positions because a need was there for our students. Didn't have the students twice in the last three years. Had to make an adjustment based on the, the enrollment. And again, we're a year behind. Takes a year to, to rectify and, and change that. One thing not on here, excuse me, the state average is 14.7. So we're at, I believe that's just 13.7 on that far end. And then, again, this big bold on the right side does not include any of the reductions we made for, for this current year, 25, 26. So just to kind of, again, the whole intent of this was just to show us, again, the Grand Canyon from the rim, big picture. And hopefully have, hopefully I've done a decent job of at least explaining the multi variables that you have to have. It's not just, it's not just really easy to look at it, oh, my gosh, you did this. No, it's four, five, six things that that could be, that could play. And they all could play just a small little piece, but make the cumulative look significant. And just to point out, you know, if you were to go from 13.7 up to 13.8, just that point one, the, the cost savings to the district is 1.4 million dollars. So that's what that calculated. I've said that before. I just wanted to reiterate it. But with that, that concludes the slides that we, I have my piece for tonight. I'm more than happy to answer any questions or if there are any questions or we're good.
So board members, I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up. This was, like Pete said, a very high overview of this data we've been asking for. And I'm so grateful that you guys got it in front of us. I know many of us have been wanting it just to kind of be able to wrap our heads around some of the decisions we're going to have to make soon. But with that said, I want y'all to know November 20th, that meeting is where you can get into the weeds. This basically is serving as kind of a foundation for that big conversation on November 20th. So I just want y'all to put that in your head right now because I know it's very tempting to start getting into the nitty gritty of this. But I want you to try to put your board hat, governance hat on and try to look at it from 10,000 feet ahead. But I need y'all to be ready on November 20th to have those in-depth discussions on not only what was presented tonight, but also over the last couple of board meetings. So with that said, share the mic.
All right. So you mentioned costs for, or the assumptions, rather, include new facilities being opened. And so looking at the ECC, there is, so there's a thought at least six campuses will be consolidated into early childhood through pre-K4, will be consolidated into the early childhood, to the ECC. So whether it's, doesn't have to be tonight, it could be the next board meeting. But something that might be helpful would be if we have information about the numbers, the, the cost to keep them housed where they are versus the cost to have them consolidated at early, the early childhood center. We've already seen some information about what that student experience at the ECC is supposed to be like and how their learning would be enhanced over there. So that's, that's an important piece. It would be interesting to, or helpful to see the, the numbers that go with it as well. And then I have the second part of assumptions for, for facilities. So one of the concerns I have, I look at the, the current year enrollment as it's broken into, or it's broken down by grade level. And as we look at the PASA report, I think it will be helpful to overlay the PASA report with, I think, the trends that we expect. And specifically, the PASA report includes the, the kinder, excuse me, the early childhood information. So I think that it will be helpful to take that out as we're looking at projecting down the road. This would be a good time, I, I think at some point we'll start looking at whether we need to, or where the costs of our early childhood scattered around the district and really the benefits to the students to have it more centralized in, in different locations, not necessarily central part of the district. But one of the concerns that I see when I look at the, the current year enrollment is there are quite a number of schools where, I mean, it's stuff we know already, where the kinder, first grade numbers are really low compared to fifth grade. So PASA could say maybe 1,000 kids are expected to move here. But if they're not coming in kindergarten, they're not coming in first grade, second grade, we might not really see those numbers. And so that's where I'm having, so for example, I'm not naming any schools. There's a school in an area where it's growing. There are still more homes coming. But their kinder class is 40% the size of their fifth grade class. There's another school where the kinder and first grade, in another part of the district, kinder and first grade added together is smaller than their fifth grade class. So we need to have a plan for, for kinder through second grade, for growing that. Because otherwise, our PASA numbers that show 1,000 kids are going to show up somewhere might never materialize.
I, I agree with you, Shawde. The, you know, I think I mentioned at last board meeting, the PASA report, when they did that slide in regards to the students that were losing to charters, they're predominantly up in the north. And I know exactly the campus you're talking about. And if you look where we're losing charters, it's these high enrolled schools. And so I would love that, Shawde, because to me, I feel like some of this conversation over the past three years has been, how do we grow these low enrolled schools? Well, that conversation needs to go out the window. What we need to do is how are we going to attract students through the entire district? Because where we're losing the most students is up here where we have the majority of the charters. And when vouchers hit the stand, I don't know what's going to happen when we have these micro pods and micro schools or whatever you call them start. I don't know what are they called? But I'm just saying, like, I think for me, this, with this discussion and with PASA, it's made me really think, okay, yeah, we have low enrolled schools, but that's not where we're also losing students. How are we going to get students in this district? What are we going to do to keep them here?
Yeah, I was looking at that and thinking about that from the PASA report and also looking at this data. I think that combined together is that a lot of that experience of, of the students in these over enrolled, you know, these campuses that are full. And I think it just pulls more into why we need to think about what our, you know, I'm looking at our HR person, looking at you, Rachel, because thinking about what that means, what that formula looks like so that we can still provide a quality experience to our students that are in these over enrolled campuses. Because if my student is in this over enrolled campus, classrooms are busting at the seams and we're cutting IAs and we're cutting and we're doing these across the board cuts and this charter school is opening across the street from me, maybe this charter school looks a lot more compelling to me than it did before. So I was right there with you, Anna. Of, yes, we have these low enrolled campuses, but we're looking at the kindergarten and the first grade. They're just not there. That, you know, they, they're not in that community. Those communities aren't growing. So, so much of it is in these high growth areas. We've lost a lot. That's where we've lost the majority of our students to charters. And so what are we going to do to bring some of them back? I think a lot of that is looking at the experience that we're providing there. And they're in overcrowded campuses where we keep cutting staff and, and reducing that formula. So to me, it just means, it was more emphasis on what our low enrolled, you know, formula looks like for staffing these campuses.
I had a question. Slide six. I'm going to go there because we have to. So it says federal revenue. We know that, I'm just saying, that's four point, for almost 4.5 million dollars. I, I mean, are we really going to anticipate that? Like, how, I guess for me, it's like, I get why you have it in there for a reason. But let's be honest, we don't know what's going to happen.
Well, we should get, the, the four is a lower number. We used to budget six. And I was usually getting seven, but we still budgeted conservatively. Now, I'm, it's, it's getting lower. I mean, MAC and Charis has, has definitely been a, a, a touching point with, between the human health services of the state of Texas and the, the federal side. I don't know where that's going in the, in the, in the future, but the trend is not in a positive direction. That's, that's clear. Now, we budgeted four. Now, we still, we should get four from last year. I mean, that, that's due to us. But since we appealed that 7 million loss from two years ago, once you appeal, everything gets put on hold. So, yeah, of course. And so that's why we haven't got last year's money. And that's why we haven't, you know, get, we don't get much from this year until that appeal is either finalized or we get a ruling. From what I've been told, most of the, I don't know what level of court it is in right now, but most of them are just ruling against the district without even really having this, which is fine. Motion judgment is fine, take it. Then we can just appeal it through the, the federal level. But you can't really appeal to the federal level until you maximize your, the lowest level, and that's the state. And you have to go through that process. And that's kinda where we're at. We're not the only district. Uh, so I've, you know, I had a conversation with a, a, a much larger district than us and so, and had a, a conversation with, with a, with, with the attorney that used to work at that district, that, in a firm. And there's, there, I can say there is, uh, a lot of districts are looking at, at, at filing some kind of, of a legal recourse or a lawsuit. Where that's at, I don't know. I just know it's being looked into. And I just said, if, if it gets to that point, let us know, cause we would be interested, cause we, you know, we, that's, that's money that we feel is due for our students and, and we, we're gonna take care of all of our students. And if it's, if it's worth joining, we'll, we'll, we'll grab onto your coattails. But just let us know so we can have those conversations. But it could be next week, it could be six months, it could be a year, I don't, you know, so. But that's kinda where that's at.
And just to be clear, this four point five million is just MAC and Charis federal revenue?
Yeah, it's not any title.
It's not any of the title money or any of those other.
No. This is just the part that's in the general fund?
On this slide also, well, it's on this slide and it's also on, on slide four. I know these are our twenty-six, twenty-seven budget pre-assumptions, but I'm, I'm looking at, are we really, are we really gonna move forward with the no pay increase for our teachers? Is that how we're, I, I know that these are the assumptions we're putting in there and I know this is the reality of our budget, but, um, with no pay increase and then also putting, um, no increase in the monthly contribution to healthcare when we know that that's going to shoot up? It's not even a matter of they're gonna be getting the same. Their checks are actually going to be less. And I worry about what that means to the, our student experience when we can't, of, when we're not budgeting in everything we can to keep our staff. Cause when we're losing the most qualified and, and the most gifted teachers, if, if they're leaving to other places, that, that's also going to overall impact. And so, I, I don't know, I know that this is where we are with the budget, but, um, as we're looking at all the levers that we want to pull, I'm, I don't know if we wanna talk about what the lever looks like for us around, uh, and I don't know if it's lever, it's like, what's the other thing called, is the lever and? The commitments, yeah, sorry, commitments. So, um, if we want, if the board feels like, do we wanna talk about a commitment in there as we're going and creating this twenty-six, twenty-seven budget of having some type of commitment to teacher salary?
I mean, part of that commitment did say, right, we wanted to maintain and keep our staff cause it costs so much more money when we have to retrain a new staff. So I feel like that that needs to be, I mean, I feel like that's part of it.
I do feel like we have to also think, like, I wanna, I think we need to really have a discussion on this because I feel like almost the Texas legislature took control and said, we're doing the raise and they've made the allotment for the raise for teachers and they did nothing for staff. And so I think we're gonna need more conversations because it is fairly new that they've done this. It is something I know that our, our administration, thank y'all so much for working this. I know we wanna, uh, uh, pay our teachers well and then what, what just happened with all the pieces? I, I don't, I think we need, I do think we need conversations, absolutely.
I agree with you, Trish. I think it's looking at everyone, all of our other, when I say staff, and sometimes I'm sorry, I, I apologize, I say, uh, teachers and I'm talking educators. And I consider you guys are part, part of the educators that, that keep our district running, right? It's our cafeteria services, it's our librarians, it's our nurses, it's our counselors. And so, um, yes, they took the teacher part out of our control and said, we're gonna give you this money that you're gonna put over here, but they didn't do anything for all of these other roles. And, um, I think we have to think about how we're going to balance these pieces. If this piece keeps increasing, we can't leave these folks over here, right?
I do wanna go back to another conversation because I, I think one of the levers or things we might have is I think, how do we pull that enrollment back? And I, I, I don't know, we might, we might end up changing this under enrolled, high enrolled. I'm, I'm not sure if this really captures, like, what PASA is showing us because we're looking at a stabilization enrollment and it's gonna be in pockets here or pockets there or not. And so I feel like having a discussion of enrollment overall and where we're gonna get this or how we're gonna bring these students in. Um, I do wonder, when I look on slide twenty, to me, I have this image that when you look at this graph, this shows, it's to me so much. And I, I'll just unpack a few of the pieces though, we're not gonna go deep tonight. But what I, what I'm thinking about is the south, it's square, uh, uh, the acreage, the footage of how many square miles it is, is smaller than the central. And the number of students that even live in that area would be smaller. And then the central is a little bigger and it's, it's square. And, and then the north has a bigger, uh, footprint, right? So this matches the footprints. And I think if you did a student to leaving ratio of how many students are here versus how many students are in our system versus not, I really wonder, is it similar? Is it that we're only losing kids in the north to the, to charters? Or does it show it because there's more kids to lose in the north? And so I wonder what those graphic, because, because it's a bigger footprint? So your numbers show more students gone, whereas in the south it wouldn't be by raw number, it's percentage. So I think it would be helpful to, for all of us to get our hands and, and head wrapped around this, to do kind of like a little bit of, I, I love what Shawde was talking about, getting those ECC numbers, realize the stuff we got from PASA actually on a map to kind of look at how this is going. I would like to see with the PASA numbers, like those next steps, and we talked about this, of seeing this, these few years out, what, what do these numbers actually end up looking like at these campuses? With the ECCs in place, how is this going to impact this? Based on the PASA projections, right? And if, 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 if then, if the thought is, okay, well, we wanna talk about, what is an elementary thirty-one? Like, I, I wanna see all these pieces together on a map to see the dynamic of what really we're looking at when we're saying, what is gonna be an average enrollment campus? Because in five years, if, looking at the projections right now, average enrollment is gonna look different than it does right here on these numbers. And so that would be good as we're talking about what, what things are we gonna do to go get our enrollment, which is really important, but what do our schools look like now? Because, um, they're gonna look different based on the PASA. And then my only other statement is, um, on the, uh, slide twenty-eight, it says it doesn't include staffing reductions for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. I know you're gonna get it to us, but later, as we continue these discussions, I'd just like to see what that is.
Trish, um, question on the first part there, you said you wanna see what those numbers look like, right? Um, year over year. Are those, are those not what's in the PASA projections? Are we saying, because we wanna, I mean, we wanna pull out the ECC, right? And, um, and look at what that looks like on the map with those numbers? Now it's time to do that phase two. On the map with the numbers though?
I, I, I don't know if I saw.
They didn't pull out the ECC, right?
So that's what I'm like, how does this look with what are we talking about on our campuses?
Cause we get that daily report every day where you can break it down. There's pre-K and then you can see other campuses, yeah, but like on a map, okay.
Yeah, I think that map along with these PASA numbers will help us determine what these levers are of, what, what is stabilization, right? What is stabilization? Because right now, I look at low enrolled campuses or what we've called low enrolled campuses, right? And there's gonna be a whole lot of them. I don't think anyone in here is saying, we're gonna close eight, nine schools, ten schools. I think we're looking at what is our stabilization number? And then creating a, um, creating what is our, what is our formula for our, you know, for running these campuses at a stabilization of five hundred? Um, if that's the stabilization number, I just threw that number out there, um, based on what that number. But I also think it is very different for an elementary school that has a thousand students, right? And just making sure that our staffing formulas are looking at all that. Because like I said, I think that's why, I think that's why those, a lot of those charters may look more appealing when staffing guidelines or, or you're feeling like your campus is being squeezed. Um, and so I think there's a way to, to staff what, and maybe we won't say low enrolled anymore. We'll say the stabilization number or whatever, right? Um, so it doesn't have this negative connotation, but this is, this is the sta- and it's not even stabilized. It's just saying that this is our staffing formula, period. Staffing formula for an elementary that's at five hundred and a staffing formula for an elementary that's at eight hundred.
No, I, I like that. I think when, you know, seeing this information and then seeing the PASA information, to me, the big key piece of this puzzle, sorry, Rachel, is gonna be the staffing piece. I feel like we've been, you know, we're, we do a great job at delivering the student experience, but times are different and we've gotta start figuring out and we're seeing where we're spending a lot of our budget. This, I mean, y'all can dig into the report, I'm not gonna go into, you know, I'm not gonna call out, but you can see how much more we're spending per student to operate these campuses under five hundred. And so I'm just trying to figure out, like, when we come to you with that, like, you know, if five hundred is the magic number that the board agrees on or whatever, right? Like, my big thing is, I need that, that, that big section that we're ensuring we're giving each and every student what they need. But we know, once they hit that eight hundred mark, we have campuses above eight hundred. I don't want them to wait three to four months to get the resources they need because then you're impacting your campuses, your leadership on that campus, you're impacting students and teachers, and that's how you get burnt out and that's how we just, you know, we don't retain. And so I'm really gonna be pushing hard on these campuses that we know are packed right now. They need the support they need, we gotta give students the experience that we need. I'm really hopeful that if we can get the staffing model down, we're gonna see a decrease of students leaving here because they're gonna get the experience they need, the stu- staff aren't gonna feel burnt out and we just overall have a more efficient system.
I do wonder, and I, I think this is a later conversation, um, I don't think it's gonna solve all it. I, I think going back to, just like y'all said, and by the way, we should all save this presentation that Pete gave because we're gonna keep getting questions about how do we get this, how do we get these numbers? I mean, thank y'all very much, it was an excellent presentation. Um, I do think we need to, to think about, um, what are all the levers when we're talking about this? And I, I wonder how this looks if one of the levers happens to be rezoning. I mean, we've done that before and we've looked at that, but it would have to be done in a, in a targeted strategic fashion. We've said the word strategic rezoning before, um, so.
I was thinking, um, some of that, the same, where I'm thinking, yeah, we know that it's, that's not gonna be all of it, right? I think it is, still is, um, school closure and consolidation. And I'm looking at slide eight and, you know, it says, is three campuses, cause I know that's what we had first, you know, we had been proposed to us, a two campus plus, uh, a low enrolled staffing formula or three campuses and a low enrolled staffing formula. Um, I think in order to dig into the, the timeline and looking through a low enrolled campus staffing formula, targeted, um, deliberate, uh, rezone in areas and consolidation, we have to see those numbers without ECC, right? What, without, you know, look, removing our pre-K, removing those early childhood numbers and really looking at those long-term numbers of, okay, well, where stabilization is well below this level, um, where, where is that lever of, okay, this is where we're gonna have to close a campus. This is where we're gonna have to close a campus. And over here, we're also going to, um, you know, look at how we can do a very targeted and strategic boundaries and, and, you know, figure those pieces out. I don't, and I'm glad you said that, cause I don't think that low enrolled staffing formula is gonna fix it all. I don't wanna give the impression to admin that, okay, that's it, we're all done. I think we all know that we're well beyond that, that that's gonna be a, a really fundamental piece to it, but that's not gonna do it all, y'all, I mean, we know that. We're looking at these numbers and we're looking at those numbers with a zero percent staff, you know, pay increase. And I'm not saying it's across the board, but I, I think that I wanna talk about some type of pay increase for everyone that didn't fall under, you know, um, what our state led did. And, and so I think all of those pieces are gonna have to come to play. With rezoning, campus consolidation, is it, is it two campuses, is it three campuses? And, and what is the lever on our low enrolled formulas?
I do wonder, and, and I think this is too early to figure it out. If I look at straight numbers, if we change the staffing model, if we did zoning, if we did this, does campus consolidation still net you as much or the same? I don't know, we'll have to have those conversations to see. But I think going back earlier and, and you discussed it, you said, uh, or I think we've all discussed it. Thank you, Board, for all discussing, I don't know who to give credit to. But I think the discussion was, at some point, when you reach a certain number, are you still delivering the academics you want? And I think that is also a key component of the conversation. Maybe we don't get any money or there isn't a balance, like after we do all this, we're like, oh, okay, we're great. We've gotten stabilization, we know our numbers. But if you have a campus, and we've seen it in other districts, if you have a hundred and fifty kiddos, can we still deliver the academics the way we want? There's gotta be that discussion part as well, as we're looking at all this, especially for, uh, the future as far as if we can't, we get some of this enrollment back, our other campuses, we need to, we need to have a plan. We all need to know what we're looking at here. Um, so I, I think there's more conversations to dig into. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping we don't get campuses as a hundred and fifty. I hope that we're having the discussion right now to bring those enrollment, to go get those numbers and we don't have to have any of this. I just think we need to be, um, conscientious of really what this is doing academics to. And I, I know you gave us the star scores, but it, it didn't have in here the, the A, the B, the overall A through F, but it doesn't talk about how are academics being impacted too? And I think that is another vital component.
Uh, no, I agree. I mean, as a parent who, you know, had a kid at a high capacity campus, right? I can tell you right off the bat, you know, it's different student experience than what you're getting at a campus, right? With smaller enrolled, right? So I agree with that, cause I think that that is important, cause, you know, one of our commitments is student experience. And so I think we just gotta constantly remember that. And the one thing I wanted to add is when, when we do these targeted rezones, I know I'm gonna just throw this out there, but I'm gonna try it. I think it's important for us when we do these targeted rezones, cause we're getting somewhat stabilized, that we try to get somewhat of a clean feeder pattern for our students. Because there is some power into a clean vertical feeder pattern. We see that with the Vandergriff, that is a clean pattern. They're able to do great PLCs, really dig in and really build up that community from the ground up. When you start working your way up, it gets a little different and especially up in the north, you've got sections siphoned off here and here and here. And it really does impact students because if you've got ten percent of your students going to a different middle school that's not getting zoned to their home high school, it's really hard for that home high school to start going to three different middle schools trying to get that same experience to each of those other students. And so you have students missing out on programs, you have students missing out on experiences. But overall for me, it's that community experience that we talk about all the time. And it just is not, it's hard to recreate that when you're splitting your middle, three different middle schools into one high school. It's hard, guys. So I, I know that's, I know that's a, it's a hard task and I know this board has talked about this, I think since I started coming to board meetings. But I'd really, really like for us, as we start talking about these targeted rezones, let's try to clean up those feeder patterns so we can get students access to the programs they want. But most importantly, let's start building that community for them, let's help them, let's start keeping it there. And then the other thing I do wanna make clear, cause I know we all have our own ideas about rezones, but y'all, let's, let's make sure, we gotta remember, these are students, they're not numbers. This, we are two hundred square miles and it is, it's easy to look on a map and be like, you should go here and go here. So I just, I wanna be very careful with that because I know I'm guilty of it, but this is going, y'all know how rezones conversations go. This is, we thought, reconsolidation talks, so boy, rezone conversations are gonna be another, another hot topic.
I mean, you were just speaking like, what we keep hearing from our kiddos, it's my school, it's not a budget item. And so on every single thing that we're talking about here, we are talking about our, our student enrollment experience. Thank you, Anna.
And so we've looked a lot about, or talked a lot about elementary school and the student experience, but we also, for future discussions, we also need to keep secondary off in our sights because that experience too, for middle school and high school, I mean, you see some elementary schools with really small classes and then they show up in mid- in the hallways of middle school, show up in Sierra Park Middle School and it's elbow to elbow, survival of the fittest during passing period. And those, um, and looking at the, the size of the, the core classes, and then they have their big core classes that are probably twice the size of their elementary school class. And so it's, um, and it goes even higher than that in, or a lot more than that in, um, in high school. So we still need to definitely keep those in sight and try and do what we can, whether it's rezone, reimagine, I've brought this up a number of times and I'll sound like a broken record, but we look at, we talk about the student experience, giving the students what they need. The stu- there's, and we've talked about attendance and looking at the attendance issues that might show up in high school and why that shows up. Some kids just cannot function in that environment and can do better in a- Some kids just cannot function in that environment, and can do better in a smaller environment. And if we can find the space for them, rethink that model for them, and create that as well.
See, and that's where having a strong tier-one model will benefit us, so we can identify those students, and get them the support, and, you know, alternative education that they need in our district, so we don't lose them. I don't know, just, I lost my train of thought. Never mind. No, I remember, real quick, Shadé, I was just gonna talk about your secondary. Board members, in our board memo, back in April, we got a list of impacts of cuts from secondary, and just like Shadé said, you saw our secondary high schools, ten percent, thirteen percent, having to cut from their, their staff. And so, when we're going through these processes, I'm gonna be asking a lot about those percentages. Secondary has took in a big brunt of these cuts, and I just, I can't, we can't do that anymore. And if we look at these slides right here, when we're talking about average students per campus, I mean, our high schools seem to be somewhat average, and, you know, for the most part, giving the student experience across the district in a uniform way, but I don't wanna see those numbers go down.
So it'll be helpful to see what kind of plan we can have for secondary that includes rezoning, and also reimagining the high school experience.
And I think also middle school. There's some conversation, so, yeah, y'all know what to do, do your thing.
No, the, the key there is, is, is the master schedule.
Exactly.
That's the staff, and that's, we're having those conversations, Rachel's been leading that, and they're, they're going through that process. And just, I wanna bring you back to this slide real quick, since we were talking, I just briefly calculated, not anything scientific, by any stretch of the imagination, but the north campus, on average, from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, on average, each campus in that north section was down twenty-three students. In the central section, they were down thirty-one students, and then in the south section, they were down thirty-two students. So it would be interesting, this Friday is snapshot day, so once I get this snapshot date, look at twenty-five, twenty-six, and add that to that, that, that three column, and see what they have, with the two new charters opening up, and to see what effect did that have on the north side, we'll get that data, so.
I, I worry, 'cause there's like another, another charter opening up next year there, so that should be in that one little, like, triangle, there'll be three charters.
Yeah.
And I can tell you right now, somebody drives by there every day, I mean, it is line after line, it's, it's, it's a mess.
Well, just put a sign out, no lines, no waiting, over it.
Hey, don't tempt me, Pete, I'll be out there.
I, Anna's right, I mean, if we identify where our kiddos are going, that helps us to think about the environment, and, and, or how to, what students, or what we need to do to attract them, right? I think it's important to know, are they going, if, if, if you're seeing a bulk of kids in the north going to the charter, what does that mean? What can we do? What, what are things, if you see in the south, it's a homeschool, or you see in the central, it's private school, I don't, but I think these are all really important factors. So, yeah, if you're gonna look at the data, it'd be great to see, like, do we see our kiddos in certain areas going to certain segments? That, that could help us, if we know it's that targeted, right?
I don't know if we can do this, but just speaking from experience, right? Y'all know my story in elementary, not in Leander, right? I, I wonder if some of these parents with elementary students, who, students either identify for special education, or they're trying to, I wonder if they're, you know, if we're not giving them the support, I don't know if there's a way for us to, like, be able to get that data, just to see, you know, I'm just speaking from experience, like, I left to go to a charter because I wasn't getting the support I needed, but I came back. And so I'm just wondering if there's some way for us to try to figure that out as well, what can we do? I know our child find team is amazing at identifying, and we're doing great, but again, it goes down to the staffing models, and when we look at these, just, you know, campuses in the north, we know how many students, we know how many those SESS teachers ratios are, they're not the same as they are at some of these lower-enrolled campuses. I'm just, that to me is where my head's going, because, I mean, I feel like, as a parent who's done that, that's gonna be the first thing I'm gonna do, is look for a better environment for my kid. All right, Board members, any other questions on this presentation? Remember, we're going to get into the nitty-gritty of it on November twentieth.
Actually, I have, I have a couple of questions. So, when you talked about the six schools that are low-enrolled, and having a staffing model for that, so I went back to the current enrollment numbers, and it does show, to me, I see, using that threshold of five hundred, I do see eleven schools that fit that. So it means that that assumption is, for your six schools, is one consolidation in the central, and then one in the south. Well, that's just making sure, because that takes one, two, three, four, five schools off of that low-enrolled list, so that's how you end up with six. Just wanted to clear that out, that that's an assumption.
Yeah, one thing, they all, those decisions are, make sure I say that right, on the mutually exclusive side, one decision, or lever, if you will, that Jeremy uses, could affect the next lever. So if you do, if a campus is closed, then that may reduce the number of campuses that are below the five hundred in the example.
Yes.
But, because now you're moving students over, and so some of those campuses next to them may be low as well, but now they're above, they go to seven hundred or, or eight hundred. And so, you know, it's not just a matter of, oh, hey, you closed three out of the eleven, and then you have eight small schools. It doesn't really necessarily work that way, you may only have four or five smaller, if you're, not that, not promoting closing three, I'm just saying, based on the, the numbers, what you have is, because if you do close one, that's gonna affect the campus attendance zones, or, or, the campuses around it, and that may, in most cases, if they're a campus that is below that five hundred threshold in the example, one or two of those campuses are gonna go above the five hundred threshold, because depending on how many students are, are, are moved, based on if a campus was closed. So, yeah, you're right, I mean, there's a lot of assumptions in there, because it's not just all three here, and eleven there, and we only use six in the example, 'cause that's what we had earlier, but it's about, again, just under three hundred thousand per campus on a, on a, on a small school one. But if you do close, that will reduce the number of small, and if you did more small and didn't close, then that was going, so it goes both ways, you just gotta figure out what, once we kinda have those deeper discussions, we can calculate what, what, what that would mean, from a financial side, but there's always the academic side conversation as well.
Yeah, 'cause all of those schools did fall in the small, and all, all five of them. And then, I think the last thing is, you didn't mention assumption of new facilities being opened, and I talked about ECC. If there's any other further detail that we're talking about new facilities, then I think we need to revisit where our bond situation is, that would be for Jeremy, and just, that's that, that's the financial side, in addition to other items that people have expressed today, like, looking at rezoning, looking at our recruitment strategy for especially the K through two side of things.
I think for me, I, I wanna see that, and then I also kinda wanna see, if we're gonna do this, I'm just throwing the number, five hundred's the magic number, right? I wanna see what thirty-one and thirty-two look like, because if we're gonna give five hundred staffing model to the majority of our elementaries, I'm gonna let you know, I'm not, we cannot leave four elementaries in the north at eight fifty to nine hundred, like, I will not, I will not support that, I'm gonna let y'all know that right now. We need to ensure that we're given the same experience, I know we can't replicate it, but if we're gonna go ahead and get behind this five hundred model, then I wanna see, when we build thirty-one and thirty-two, what does that look like, as far as population? I wanna see what that looks like, how this goes.
I just wanna remind, sorry, this, kinda.
No, no, go, go, and then I'll go.
That graph was from the Austin, was the five hundred. Jeremy and their group, they've been using sixty percent of capacity, so that, that's our, it's not a five hundred, it's.
I know, I just threw that out, right?
No, I gotcha.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we're all understanding, I, I think Jeremy's almost ready to say that as well, maybe.
That's another conversation coming, we, we, we realize that, that's a conversation, you know, I think, you know, we did the PASA in this, and I think that's, we're leading up to that, but I'm just, I just threw that number out there.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're good.
I just wanna build on that, because you said, on November twentieth, we're gonna get into it, or dig into it. I don't see this, so I'm gonna wait till we have the timeline discussion, 'cause I don't see this on there. When we get to timeline discussion, I want you, I wanna understand what part of this guy moves over in the conversation for November twentieth, or is this a separate agenda item?
That's gonna be part of November twentieth.
Okay, I'll.
The timeline is just kind of, we're just, the timeline is not set in stone, it is just what it could be. But the Board is going to be directing that timeline, but these are just the foundations setting up to the twentieth.
I just wanna make sure I understand, so you, we're gonna have more discussions on this on November twentieth, so read chapters, like, I mean, there's the.
You need to read everything.
Yeah, there's that, well, I've already read it, but, of course, but when you're talking about giving in, into it, you, you're talking about, like, the central office discussion in here, the special education.
Staffing is gonna be a completely thing.
Is that coming up?
We're talking about, like, our levers, we're gonna talk about pre-K, we're gonna talk about transfers, this is all.
Is this report, do I need to, like, be prepared to discuss more of this for November twentieth?
I think you need to be prepared for that, I think you need to use the PASA, the PASA meeting, I think you need to use the resolution, I think every single meeting we've called, leading up to this, I think you need to use everything, because.
It's kind of all open for discussion, then?
Well, I mean, we're gonna be very clear, like, you're, I mean, you're gonna, we're gonna follow the agenda, but essentially, what we're doing right now is, we're trying to lay, this is the foundation we're doing, and we're about to make a pivot, and it's gonna go fast and furious.
I just wanna make sure I understood, I would love to have a copy of our resolution.
Is it online? Yeah, it's online. 'Cause it was sent out to us by ParentSquare.
We can print one for you, and have it in your folder, if that's what you need.
And I think for the community, it would, it would be great if all of this was in one place for the community too, because these conversations are gonna keep building. So I don't know if there's just a place where we, we can, like, just shove some links, so everybody knows, like, look, these are all the stuff that we're building off of in the discussions, I think would help.
I mean, I think that's, you know, part of the community outreach, I just don't wanna also give extra work, 'cause, you know, we are asking a lot of administration right now, so I'll let Bruce handle that, and you can go forward with that.
The, the, I guess I, I'll wait until we get to the timeline, I, heads up on the, because you just said, I wanna see how, if we do elementary thirty-one, how does it impact, or if we do consolidate, or we don't consolidate, that impacts, and we, we keep pulling off a PASA, so I'm hoping that would be our next conversation, because, you know, we said, right now, we just wanted to focus on the data, but of course, that was great, and I wanted to do that, but now I do wanna see some maps, I wanna see how these numbers move, as you move things in or off the map, if element, if the early learning centers come in, how that changes our map. If, if you added a thirty-one, does that change the map? Or how does that move these? And use the PASA data that we have, so we can see, what does this look like in five years or ten years?
No, definitely, Trish.
I also think what it looks like from schools that we've talked about consolidating, what it looks like with all of those pieces as well, right? What it looks like not to consolidate, what it looks like to consolidate, with one of those schools, two of those schools, three of those schools, how those impact all of those as well.
If we do it, can we, I, I'm hoping then Jeremy can pick a, a number, so you're gonna, then, then at that same time, we're gonna have to have a discussion, so if you're gonna assume a consolidation, is it a five hundred? Is it a four fifty number that makes it? And so then, all the four fifties, do we see that? Are we only, I mean, I don't know, I just wanna know there's a method, a scope, that, how we're doing it, when you bring it back to us.
Yeah, I can cover it real quick, so, we have new numbers, new data, as you know, and we've run some scenarios, just looking at what it would look like with thirty-one, thirty-two, and ECC, so we'll rerun that with the new projections, because they, they are a little bit different, and so we, we can rerun those. When, I would say, when it comes to the conversations we had, path one and all that, we did have numbers in there, on where we thought that those would land, based on the projection from last year, what we could probably do is, we could update that for, you know, the twenty-six, twenty-seven, I mean, that's something that we could do, given the same format that we've already presented in, we would just plug in the new numbers based on those assumptions. And so it, it may vary just a little bit, but we can go with the same type of approach that we had before. So, we can just update a lot of the information you've already received before, just with the newest data from PASA.
Okay. And just, Anna said it, when we do that presentation, can we remember that we're gonna have to talk about our, our population as a whole, as far as zoning, and where they're at in students, and how those numbers are, but I wanna underscore it, Anna said, like, we need to do that presentation, sometimes, we know these are students, but we're gonna have to have that discussion, but we know that we're also gonna be discussing, how does this impact the students? It's just sometimes, as you're starting to talk about, it can get.
No, and I, I think I, I, and I'm gonna get better before every Board meeting, like, our community needs to understand, like, this is the time we all get to talk, as a Board. And they're gonna need to give us some space and some grace, and allow us to talk this out, 'cause we are really trying to figure out a huge problem. I mean, not only with low enrolled and keeping students, but we've got a deficit, I mean, we've got a deficit we gotta figure out, and I really wish, you know, people understood that each of us here are doing the best we can, and they really need to allow us to have space, that doesn't mean we're gonna be negative and horrible people, but you're right, Trish, there's gonna be times when we're gonna be like, well, what about this school and this school? Like, just give us that space to be able to talk freely, and to be able to work this out, because this is, this is the time we get to talk, this is it.
And as we look at thirty-one, thirty-two, and look at the PASA data, we also need to remember that it includes the early childhood data, and those students are going to move to hi-, to, to.
Not at thirty-one and thirty-two, they wanna, ECC won't be impacted by those two campuses.
Tarvin.
Nope. That, so, thirty-one won't be impacted by ECC.
Okay, yeah, but, um, one of them is Tarvin, North, all of those are going to ECC.
So I think, I think what you're asking for is, as we look at what a potential catchment area looks like for thirty-one or thirty-two, it includes the ECC children having moved out of those four campuses already.
Correct. Yes, moved out of the, of the, in the PASA report, and then, there are certain schools, not all of them, that have their incoming kinder, or their K kinder in first grades, maybe up to second, really small, compared to their fourth and fifth grade. And so, if PASA's saying this school's gonna be a thousand kids, we need to consider the fact that they might not all show up, unless we have some strategy to bring them in, and show that we have them coming.
Yeah, I think what PASA pointed out when they were here was that, yes, there are smaller kindergarten classes coming in across the board, we've seen that, and that's been consistently happening, we do, do still have some in-migration that comes in the middle grades, that is what's causing those campuses to stabilize, though. And so, I, I think I hear you saying, we need to be careful about if their projections are correct, if those small classes are, are pushing through the system, but they have taken that into account.
I think, though, to back up, or to confirm what I'm thinking Shadé's saying, is though, when we look at some of those PASA numbers, some of those PASA numbers do include, right, our pre-K numbers, and so when, when, when we bring it back, and we're talking about how those programs are moving, like, we just need to make sure we're clear on the numbers of the students that are enrolled in these campuses with, that don't include that, that pre-K number, when we're doing these maps and doing these movements.
Absolutely, and so as Jeremy talks through the next item, which is the, the timeline, we will talk very carefully about why we're gonna talk about transfers and pre-K specifically, because we want to make sure that it's very, very clear, where are those students included, and where are they not, and that we're consistently doing that over time.
Board members, any other questions on this presentation? Okay, I really, really.
Sorry, one last thing.
Shadé, Shadé, Shadé. You got, you got two minutes, go.
I mean, this is not for tonight, but just down the road, I think it would be nice to have, as we look at the costs as well, and the student experience, we should look at that for, do we have that on the agenda for bilingual programs as well? Yeah, it's, 'cause we have that, we're talking about that for pre-K, but wanna make sure that we look at that for bilingual as well.
So, our timeline will give you an indication of when those conversations will begin, so. Any other questions, Board members? All right, I really, really, really need y'all to make sure you read this, read all the attachments to this. I know it doesn't make sense right now, but they're all gonna have pieces, and I expect y'all to come ready on November twentieth, to really get into the nitty-gritty, and start making some hard decisions, y'all, it's time. All right, Board members, it is eight, seven fifty-nine PM, and we are gonna take an eleven-minute break. break. It is 8:12 PM, and we have returned from break. Board members, we will now move to 4B, Discussion of the Long Range Planning Timeline.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Gearing. Here tonight, beyond Dr. Poppy and his presentation just around budget, what we wanted to do is time some of the things around, from the resolution, but also tied to budget into a long-range plan. So this is going to be kind of a high-level overview of some of the key phases, milestones, and decision points moving forward with long-range planning in the district. We've made a lot of progress, had a lot of conversations, got a lot of feedback, and this is trying to look at multiple months, but also multiple years, in order to create a framework, a structure, and a cadence as to when our community, when our staff, when our board can expect decisions and other information to come before them. And so it's very simple. At this point, there's no decisions tied to this timeline. This is just an overview highlighting some of those milestones. So I'm going to dive right into it. We set this up, like we talked about before, in kind of what we call a Gantt chart. What it does is it aligns some of the important tasks, not all of them, that some will probably be added to this timeline as we work through this. But this gives a data point on when would this happen, and what's next, and how long will it take? So this is broken down. We're going to start micro, and we're going to work all the way to macro. What I mean by micro is this first slide right here is a year at a glance. And it starts in October, and it kind of works its way through the spring towards the end of the, end of the school year. So diving right in, so we're going to go month by month, and I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. I just want to give a high level, what's involved in each month. If we look at October specifically, we've already passed one of these steps, and that's the demographic update that Population Survey Analyst provided at the October 23rd board meeting. And then also tied to that is tomorrow's not only Halloween, it's also PIM Snapshot Day, in which it's the foundation of data that we use. Why, PIM Snapshot is like a moment in time, but it's a data point that is consistent across all districts in the state of Texas. And when we look year over year, we always go back to that October snapshot date, understanding that enrollment changes over time. But that's kind of our snapshot, that's what we, how we compare things. And that, if you see most data that we have with long-range planning, it's going to be tied to that snapshot. It's just a baseline for planning and further conversations down the line. Now, as we transition into November, like we mentioned, November 20th is going to be one of those meetings. We get into the weeds a little bit. Now, I do want to reflect that this timeline is tied to a lot of the long-range planning stuff, but there's also timelines that we spoke about in the past tied to budget and staffing and things like that. So there's concurrent timelines going on. Tonight, I want to focus on just some of the long-range planning milestones involved over the next year. So one thing we want to do is provide an overview of the transfer student enrollment impact on campuses. Like, what is the, how does that look when it comes to intra-district transfers, but also implementing an open enrollment policy for the 26, 27 school year? How is it going to impact our campuses? How are we going to apply that? And we want to provide some further details. But also, one of the things that we heard is, how does pre-K apply? Just looking at total enrollment per campus, and then that obviously is going to impact capacity, which is a metric that we utilized when we talked through our Path 1, 2, and 3. And so we want to look deeper into that. And so we're going to bring that information to you in a couple of different forms so we can get into the weeds, and so we can better understand how we want to gather and present that data for everyone to make informed decisions. And then later in November-
I'm sorry, does that include pre-K bilingual in all programs that we're going to talk about? Or is this only, is it only pre-K or pre-K and bilingual? Does it include all program discussion as well that we talked about earlier? I just want to make sure I understand what that-
So focused right here is just pre-K, pre-K 3, 4, and pre-K bilingual. Sorry, pre-K dual language. That's kind of what we're focused on in this one bullet right there. Yeah, just so we can break that down for you, because it's important, whether it's special program or not. And then later in the November, we talked about this, this has been a milestone on our overall timeline, is staffing guidelines. And how does, how does that affect? We talk about not only low-enrolled staffing guideline, we talk about that, but also just staffing guidelines in general. We look at our 800, 850, 900 campuses, what do staffing guidelines look like there? And so Rachel, HR team, has been working with our focus groups to do that, but that's going to be wrapped up mid-November. But I wanted to put that on here because it's going to help us revise some of those triggers as we talk about other aspects in later months. And again, this kind of follows, if you read long in the resolution, these things are tied back to that resolution that we worked on on October 20, September 30, I believe, was that meeting. Okay, now I'm going to move into December because that information, those staffing guidelines are going to be important. Why they're going to be important? Because we're going to move into the thresholds. We talked about thresholds, especially in that resolution, trying to understand, what is that initial threshold that's going to trigger staffing guidelines? We're going to, we're going to know that, and we're going to bring that and explain how that was generated and what that means to decisions. But also a deeper trigger, which will be that, that second threshold that could lead to future potential campus closures or consolidations. What's important is between those two thresholds, mitigation strategies. And what happens is you, you reach the first threshold, and then there's strategies that would be deployed in order to try to mitigate that campus to reaching that second threshold. So we don't know all those strategies right now, but we'll work through those, and we want to bring those to the board and talk through that. But that's in the December timeframe. Why is December and not November? It's because we really need to get through the staffing guidelines, get those results in order to move forward in some of these strategies and bringing that to you. And then January through March, some of the, again, we're trying to build upon the feedback that we received through this process that we underwent over the last several months. And one of those is just, how do we look at capacity? And what other metrics could we pair with that information? And so one of those metrics that we can pair is what is called an educational adequacy facility study, and it's really just looking at a baseline of what we want our campuses, what do we want them to provide? And then we baseline every one of our other campuses against that, and it creates a scoring matrix to allow us to look at how our campuses stack up against each- matrix to allow us to look at how our campuses stack up against each other, just from a facility standpoint. So we want to partner with a third party in order to get that going, get that study, so we can wrap that up in the springtime. But another piece of it included in the resolution was also the development of what we'll call a state of facilities, an instrument there that we present annually, and this is just a data point. So you get a demographic study every single year in October. What we would want to do in around November timeframe is provide a state of facilities for every campus, and what you're going to see is enrollment and some of those trends, but also paired with an educational adequacy study. It's just going to be a snapshot, an instrument, a document report for you to have every single year, for you to just to review, for our community to understand where our facilities stand from an enrollment standpoint, immediately after that demographic update. And then February through the May timeframe, kind of working through the end of the school year, is program innovation. We've talked about that, and so what we want to do as a district administratively is put together a program innovation focus group. I'm not talking about just academy, just looking at all of our programs and some of the innovation there, and research that and assess and consider new or refreshed programs that may align with some of future decisions. And some of this can be tied to those mitigation strategies as well. And of course, we have our Citizen Facility Advisory Committee. This could be deployed in order to develop a potential bond in November 2026. And then lastly, just utilization and looking at what that looks like overall across the district. Now I want to go years 2 and 3. Now I'm going to start going macro, and it's going to get not as exciting, because there's just not as much on this map. But if we look at from years 2 to 3, looking at from August 26 through May of '28, we're looking at early childhood, that's going to open in August of 2026. And so that's going to impact, like we've already talked about, it's going to impact just enrollment around surrounding campuses, but it's also going to meet some other needs across the district. And then potential VADER potentially in November '26, and then a potential bond in November of '26 as well. Those both have to be called by the Board and the district in the August timeframe, but what we want to do is just capture those on a timeline to know what could be coming up over the next couple of years. And then we look at years 3 through 4, and this is where we see those new potential facilities. And right now, we have 31, 32, but also within this bond, the current bond, 2023 bond, was the design of Anarta College High School. And so we wanted to make sure that we put that on a timeline. The earliest that that could be opened would be August of 2028. And so that's where those are, the locations there, just as was planned, but we needed to put those on a timeline, because they are real things, that decisions may need to be made upon. But again, those are in the later years. And then lastly, we want to go all the way out to 10. We have 5 to 10, it's very boring. But when we get on a cycle of every four to five years, it's kind of the planning cycle we have for bonds, there could be a potential bond looking out in the 2031 timeframe if we went out for a November 2026 bond. And this is just to maintain the buildings that we do have and the programs that we have. And so a lot of this could change. I just wanted to put those place markers on a timeline out into the future. So let me talk about next steps real quick, and then I'll be done, we can have a discussion. So next steps for this fall, I wanted to focus on this fall, is we're going to look at those transfer student and pre-K program enrollments on November 20th, and we're going to have those staffing guidelines, because those are going to, we want to see how those play with our enrollment, transfer, and pre-K. And then lastly, the enrollment thresholds and those mitigation strategies. That's kind of, those are kind of some of those next steps within this fall to continue to have the conversations that we've already begun. So that's high-level, open to some discussion.
Okay, I don't know where to start, but I'm just going to jump in. I guess first, for the past like two years, we've heard we're in a significant budget crisis. And every year, it's gotten a little deeper and a little bit harder. And Dr. Gearing, you talked to the Board about, we have to be ready to make hard decisions. And I'm looking at this timeline, and I'm like, okay, when we look at these levers and we say, okay, here are the campuses that we need to consolidate, are we giving, are we giving those campuses enough time so that we can do this for the 26, 27 school year? Because it looks like, I hope we're not talking about kicking the can down another year. One, you talked to us about how we're in this significant budget crisis, and we need to be bold, and we need to be brave, and we can't afford for us to kick the can down. So, okay, we heard all of that. We've heard our schools that are fully enrolled and over-enrolled feeling the crunch of our under-enrolled campuses. Our snapshot, our enrollment this year was lower than we thought, and so our deficit is higher than we thought. We're talking about no pay increase with that deficit. We know we need to do something for those. I look at this, and I also feel like we're counting on, okay, well, we're going, we're going to do a VADER and we're going to pass, and this is going to help. We need to, I hope we can do that. I'm going to fully support that, but I think we can't count on that. We just can't. We can't count on that. There's a lot of, you know, voter distrust right now, and the economy, a lot of people are feeling different financial pieces. So VADER doesn't pass, we kick the can down another year. Let's talk about what our deficit looks like after we've kicked the can down yet another year. So when I'm looking at this, Jeremy and Dr. Gearing, tell me, when are we also going to, I also think there's this, there's schools that we have talked to. Are we going to tell them we're going to keep y'all all in limbo for another year? Because all that does is decrease enrollment even more. When are we going to be able to tell our campuses that we're making a decision? Not like, oh, we're going to, we're going to make a decision later, we're going to make it later. I think that has a lot of impacts to the culture of that campus. It has a lot of impact to the overall enrollment of that campus, not just to our financial position, right? But I'm looking at this, and I'm kind of concerned that it looks like we're either not going to let people know until May, or we're potentially saying, no, we're going to, we're going to wait and tell them, we're going to kick this down another year. So help me understand that part, because I'm really concerned about what I'm seeing right here.
Yes, I think we got a lot of feedback from the community in the last several months and from the Board as well. And the Board did a great job of clarifying exactly what the path forward looked like through the resolution. And so that's what we're bringing back to you to step through that. We're providing you the opportunity to have these conversations and make those decisions as we go. Don't think we've precluded any decision. I have said out loud to our internal staff that no decisions have been made yet, and those decisions could still possibly be made for as early as the 26, 27 school year. I think we're going to talk about thresholds, and we all agreed, I thought, that the threshold conversation was really important in this case, because there wasn't clarity around what exactly was the threshold for consolidation, and how did that work? And that's why we've brought all the data back to you again. But I think now that is something that we need to talk about very seriously on November 20th, is what are those thresholds, and where do campuses fall in relation to those thresholds? And then what decisions need to be made, and by when? We just didn't want to lay that out very clearly before the Board had had an opportunity to really have conversation, having seen all of the data that you requested.
So is it possible that November, after we top the threshold conversation, that December 11th, we could possibly have a recommendation as to what it looks like to consolidate two schools?
It would be my recommendation that you don't wait longer than December 11th, is that something that the Board decides together that we want to do for the 26, 27 school year in order to give enough notice to those campuses?
Yes.
And in order to give us the opportunity to make sure that we can step through all the processes that have to happen in order to do that well.
So it might be helpful to have a decision checkpoint marker on here, maybe whether it's December, I mean, you can put like one every month, or whatever it is. And then there's a final one for the, let's say, no later than March, or something. You can have one in December, or you can have one maybe January, something like that. So we have decision checkpoints that are marked on here.
What I do want to point out, however, is that we must not forget the systemic nature of this conversation. So every lever that we look at impacts every other lever in the system. And so, for example, and I appreciate the fact that we're having frank conversations in public, because our public needs to understand this, that, you know, school closure and consolidation does have a potential impact on VADER and bond decisions. And so we have to have frank conversations around what does that look like and what are the potential impacts of each? And I think that's why Jeremy put together a great tool that we can use to help us to have those conversations, based on the commitments that the Board agreed on at the last meeting or the previous meeting. And so that would be my only caution as we go forward, is that we make sure that we're really having these conversations and keeping them in the context of, we can't talk about each one in isolation. We have to just make sure that we're understanding the impacts on other decisions of any decision that we make.
I agree with that, but if we're going to be talking about community trust and going to a bond and a VADER, and the data supports that keeping low-enrolled schools is costing us more per student to operate those buildings, I'm just having a hard time, if we want to talk about data and look at the last bond, and what parts of our community did vote for it and parts that didn't, it's our high-enrolled campus areas where it came out and voted for us. So I mean, I'm just saying, if we want to be political and think about our decisions and whatnot, I would really be cautious to be like, well, if we close this school in this section, we're not going to win a VADER or bond when the data doesn't support that.
Yeah, I would not want us to create a timeline around a bond or a VADER. I think that our communities, like at this point, y'all have been playing with our emotions for too long, tell us, like, figure out the levers and take action. And to, I feel like this timeline is, okay, we're not going to make a decision until we do this VADER. I think everybody's going to see past that. I think like, that's not how we get community trust. I think, hey, we're making decisions, they're hard decisions, decisions that across the country, nobody wants to be making, right? But we're going to do what we think is best for our students in our district, and then we're going to come to y'all and say, this is what we need to do to continue providing, you know, the best educational opportunities for our students, and if that's going for VADER, going for bond. But I don't feel comfortable with a timeline that feels to me like we're kicking the can down so that we can be like, okay, we're not going to make a decision yet, because we want you to vote first. I think people would rather us, hey, y'all, tell us what's going to happen and be honest and transparent with us now. So, because I feel like it's been a long time we've been having these discussions, and it is really impacting the, you know, the social, emotional needs of those campuses too. I want them to, whether, you know, we decide, no, it's not going to be in here, because we're looking at the, what our stabilization is. So maybe some of the campuses that we have talked about before, maybe it's not, maybe it's not, and we can say, no, we're going to try this stabilization. But I think there's other areas, when we look at PASA, and when we look at stabilization, we see the writings on the wall. So why aren't we doing, I'm more worried that we're going to kick this can down, we don't pass a VADER, and now we are in a worse financial position than we could have been because we were gambling.
So this timeline is designed to help us to make that decision in the right timeframe. It in no way, form, or fashion is designed to put off decisions or not. We wanted to make sure that the Board had the ability to make those decisions at the right time, based on the requests that we had from the Board, to bring information back to you, and what pieces we had to have in place to make those decisions. We're trying to make sure that you get them in place. You still have time to make those decisions, if that's what we choose to do. And we want to be, we wanted to be sure to bring that to you in a timely fashion. I think we have done that. We also have listened very carefully to all of the feedback that we got from the Board through the resolution, and we're trying to make sure that we lay all of those pieces out in the right timeframe.
One, I want to clarify the, oh, is it, I thought it was on. Yeah, there we go.
There we go.
One, I want to confirm that the mitigation strategies listed in December, those are the levers we're talking about, correct?
So I think sometimes, we're going to talk about levers in a couple of different ways, I believe, but from a mitigation strategy, that would be tied directly to, say, an enrollment, right? And so how can we increase enrollment, right? Whether it's innovation or whatever. So when it comes to levers, you know, we talk about budget levers, right? Decisions that we're going to have to make tied to the overall district, not necessarily to a campus. So mitigation strategy would be if a campus goes below the first threshold and staffing guidelines are applied, then mitigation strategies would try to at least stabilize that campus at that enrollment and not let it drop below into the second threshold. And so you can call them levers, but I also don't want to confuse them with some of the budget decision levers that we talked about last time. And so a lot of different things can be called levers, but how we've been generally explaining levers, there's a small difference here. And so we don't have all the mitigation strategies defined, and that's what we want to bring you in December, but I do want to differentiate between the two.
Just because what I hear is that, yeah, there's kind of intertwined. The budget conversations we're having and long-range planning conversations intertwine, and so I was kind of thinking of what Gloria was mentioning. And so in my mind, like, there's the threshold conversation we need to have, and then we need to, and then we need to look at our options that we have to address our situation, and then we have December 11th as a date that decisions need to be made by. And so I think this timeline doesn't give us enough time. So I could imagine, if we need the threshold conversation on the 20th, my question would be, can we do that on the 13th, or can we have that earlier? So then we have time to go through our options, our options, one being consolidation being the levers that we mentioned, to give us enough time to make decisions by December the 11th.
Yes, I would say, overall, the timeline that you saw tonight is, most of it is tied to the resolution, right? So we come with a resolution, we try to create milestones and key phases of that resolution, put it in a linear way to communicate that. So a lot of the milestones you're seeing are tied to the resolution. But it's also a Gantt chart, because some items are on the critical path. And so if we look at, one thing has to happen before the next, and so when we have staffing guidelines and trying to wrap those up and do that in a meaningful way, because our staff are tied to that, they're helping develop that. And once we have that, then we can get the thresholds developed pretty quickly after we just have that staffing guideline updated. And so that's why you see, like, oh, this is taking a little longer, but it's because this comes before that, but it's tied to the resolution and some of the work and the direction that we were given by the Board. But there's so many conversations happening right now. There's this resolution and the timeline tied to it. We have budget levers that we talked about and the impact on the student-staff experience, but also we have this other timeline that we talked about. Maybe it would be good for us to, within this timeline, we also have just our normal decisions that we have to make from staffing and budget. Because what happens right now is that we had projections, we're going to get grade level projections in the next couple of weeks from PASA. And once we get grade level projections, then we can get those developed for campuses to just know how much staff we need on those campuses. And if there are any adjustments in our campus layouts and things like that, we need to know that so we can adjust our staffing guidelines. So there's a lot that happens, and maybe we just need to even present that. Like you mentioned, Shaw, day, like, where are the checkpoints? We may need to just do a different timeline to have some of these other things all tied together. It just seems like we have too many things happening at the same time.
Well, I think Anna's going to talk about meetings, because I'm fine, I'm fine with having meetings to have these discussions, but I want to be like- I'm, I'm fine with having meetings to have these discussions, but I, I want to be, like, I think you've laid out some of the things we've been talking about. Yes, if, if, if we're waiting for a Vader, I mean, if we're doing a Vader and then it's like, oh, we know, we know we're going to consolidate, but we're going to ask you for a Vader. That's not cool, not cool. But if what we're saying is community Vader helps us so we don't have to make this as a financial decision, we do this as something else, that's a different conversation. So I, I do think we might need to think about like what it is that's motivating that. For me, I really want, I like all these pieces, the way you laid them out, because I think they talk to us about what really is hitting us financially, which is we're talking about how are we going to increase enrollment? How are we going to deal with the lower stabilization, all the different pieces? And if we can't get all these pieces figured out, the consolidation just looks like a rash decision. I know the boards don't do that. That's why we said, hey, we need numbers, we need data, we need information. So I think, I agree, we don't want, if we already know a decision, a campus just lingering. But what I'd like to know is, and, and it goes back to, I, I mean, I don't see it in here, maybe we can do it in November 20th. I want to see the PASA maps with the new data with the early learning center and how are these numbers falling in all the campuses? Because we have an idea of what we think. Board members are watching these enrollment numbers, we have an idea. But once you start putting these, the early learning center on, in place, you, you, you tell us your projection for elementary 31 or 32, we start looking at this map, this could fall different. And, and we see a lot of campuses right now that if, if 500 was a number, and we still haven't talked about thresholds, this is the thing, if 500 is going to end up being a number, there's a lot of campuses that we could be talking about. And so I just think we want to be, and I know Gloria wants to be, I'm, I'm just saying, I think it's important for us to have these pieces, and if we need to have more meetings to have the pieces, so be it. I, i- if, if that's how we want to do it, but I, I want to make sure we're thoughtful in the process. Because I'm still working on that when I look at the, the savings so far that was projected some time ago on consolidations, that savings did not include a campus that already had a low staffing model. And so what happens if a campus has a low staffing model? And are we really only talking about 18 to 21 staff that gives us the savings? I mean, these are, there's important pieces in here, and I just, I, again, we can't have all those conversations tonight. I just want to make sure we have those conversations.
I was going to say, I don't think if we made a decision, it would be rash, talking about consolidation. We've been talking about it for two years. So no, I don't, I don't think that it's a rash discussion or decision at this point. We've been having these conversations for a long time. I also think that those low enrolled staffing formulas, I think are, are important to the conversation because some of the different scenarios that we've talked through, I don't know if that's really what's our community, I don't know if that's what some people are prepared, you know, to, to see. And when we talk about our educational experience, I don't, I think there's a lot of families that are going to have a lot of concern about, about that type of staffing model. So I think that's a really important position as well. I am all for us having more meetings so that, I think we need to be honest with our community, and I think we need to, if it means having more meetings, I do not want to hold people in this limbo anymore. We've been holding them in this limbo for years already. And so of, are we going to do this? Are we talking about this school? Are we talking about this school? Oh, no, now we're talking about this school. I think we need to have more meetings, figure out what are the levers and what are the strategies, right? And what are the levers? And then, and then create a timeline where we can tell people, okay, like Shadé said, if it is a consolidation for the 26, 27 year, this is the date we'll make that by. I know when you and I talked about open enrollment, I was like, we're going to do open enrollment, this is going to do this. And, you know, you shared some data, talked a lot about what open enrollment looks like. It's a gradual process. It's not anything that's going to fix a problem in a year. It's something that grows over time, so hopefully over some time, it will help with the stabilization numbers at those campuses. But open enrollment is not going to save us. And I, at a point, I didn't say, no, it's going to be okay, we're going to do open enrollment, it's going to fix this and this. And you really helped me see that, no, that's not going to happen. And what it's going to give us is really a little bump here and a little bump there. Go ahead, Anna, sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, I think slide eight, so when I look at this, this part, I think this is a slide that kind of concerns me. Because I, we've been talking about this, I mean, I've been on this committee since 2022, three years now. And this scares me because we, I mean, the data's there, right? We've had PASA confirm it, we see what it's costing us to keep low enrolled, you know, campuses at. We're having to cut at our secondary to justify keeping this open. And I'm like wondering, like, this whole, you know, mitigation strategy, are you wanting to do it for all campuses? And so it's like, hey, this campus that has 300 kids, let's wait a year to see if we can get enrollment up to 200. Because if we do that, then I want to know where are we cutting in our budget to justify keeping this open? Like, that's where I'm concerned about. Like, we talk about student experience, we're talking about making sure we're giving our staff teacher pay, but we're going to be spending money, extra money, keeping these under enrolled schools open while we're cutting from other places. And that's my big thing right now. Like, we saw how much we cut last year, 13.1% came from one high school. Like, that, what are we doing to our staff? We're over, we're overworking them so that way we can keep schools open for 350 kids, 400 kids. And I just, if we're going to talk about a bigger picture rather than two campuses, like, there's 42,000 students in here, 6,000 staff members. Like, this, this concerns me. I feel like we're just focused on these low enrolled campuses and the rest of the district, good luck, sorry, we're just going to cut everything to kick the can down the road.
I just, I, I disagree with part of that. I understand the question and the things you're asking. I, I, I completely concur that we need to have these discussions. But I think, I, I just want to make sure we're not overgeneralizing. I mean, and, and then I will be doing the same thing, though. If I, if I do my counter and on, it's like, well, to consolidate a campus, what we're really talking about is, is removing a, a riff of 18 to 21 staff. That's what we're talking about. It's not, it's not just about, we have to worry about, the lunches still move with the kids, the, the kids don't need teachers, the kids are still, so we're, it's not the building that's costing us money, it's the staff that's costing us money. And so I just, it's, if, yes, absolutely, I agree that at some point we're going to look at and go, is academics where we need it? Then we need to consolidate. And this school campus, if it's running at such a low number, this isn't going to do this. But if we're really talking about the savings comes from reduction of force and staff, then that just needs to be a, just a conversation. And really, I don't think we have to spend days or months or years doing this decision. I just think we need to have that number. Because when I'm looking at the PMS and I'm looking here, and I've got, we've got all the data, right? We've got here, we're talking about, and it's, it's, it's gonna, it's, it's fine, we can do this, it's going to get interesting, but we're going to navigate through it. But you're looking at 40 kids over here that's keeping this campus open, but you're not going to have the 40 kids over here. Well, it's more than that. It's these pieces, it's this, and if, I just feel like if we're not intentional in this discussion, we're not setting ourselves up. I don't see it as a, oh, well, if we consolidate, we'll have all this instant money and now we can, now we can do all these things with it. We saw with the levers, it's not. And once you do the staffing models, is it going to be that amount of savings? And it, I mean, there's just so many, and I, I get it, like, we're all looking at the numbers. I, I think based on enrollment, we have an idea, but I think these discussions are important. I think they are critical, and I just don't want to skip the discussions.
No, I think you made a great point there. Like, if we go look back from, you know, where PASA showed us from 2015, right? Like, that's where you started seeing this up and dip of enrollment, and we continued to staff like we were a high growth district. Like, we have a system-wide staffing problem, let's just be honest, let's call it for what it is. And you're right, like, nobody wants to talk about a reduction in force, but we're not going to save money just by closing schools. There's got to be other, it's a domino effect, Trish, and you're absolutely right. Like, I, that's a hard, it's going to be a hard conversation, but in reality, we know what our budget is, and it's just going to keep getting, deficit just keeps getting more and more. And if we don't stop and do something and reevaluate how we're staffing, like, hello TEA, they're going to come on our door and we know it. And so like, I, I agree with you on that, that's going to be a hard conversation, but I, I agree with you that, that's a conversation we're going to have to have. The other thing on slide eight, what concerns me, again, low enrollment staffing, where's our high enrolled staffing? Where, where's those thresholds? When is that campus that has 850 or 800 students get that AP? Are we going to make them wait six, seven months? Like, that, that is my concern here. It's got to be the entire district, not just low enrollment staffing guidelines.
And we need to look at the whole system, right? And, and so when we're talking, it's not just about if we decide to consolidate, and I think we're looking at the numbers, okay? But I think we need to talk about why are we consolidating? Is it only a budget issue? Because I think at some point, we're going to say, when is academics impacted? And I think that should also be part of these conversations.
Go ahead, Rachel.
So in reference to what Anna was talking about, of looking at the larger schools as well, we're doing that at all levels through the staffing guideline process, looking not just at low enrolled, but also high enrolled, and getting feedback from the principals on what makes it the best experience for the students. And so I don't want y'all to think that we're not considering that because that is part of the conversation that will be resolved by the end of November.
And I, and for the 26, 27 school year, when there is some relief provided by the, by ECC, based on the current numbers, I don't know what's going to happen with who shows up next year, but there is no school that will be above 800 and 2750 or whatever it is, but elementary. But to, I, I just wanted to reiterate what I've been saying all along is, yes, this is, we definitely need to, this is an opportunity for us to look at our system as a whole and make it more efficient.
Yes.
At the elementary school level, middle school level, and high school level. So, because if there's imbalance in one area, it affects everywhere. So it's really just, Anna's talked about the cuts that we've had at the secondary level, it's been really painful. And, yeah. And so we definitely need to keep that also in sight as we look at what we're doing with elementary.
So I have a question, Pete. When we had that, the potential cost if we consolidated in the numbers, did that include costs like utilities and maintenance as well and the upkeep of the building? Because I mean, then the number grows even more.
Because we're not going to demolish the building.
Yeah, we didn't take into the savings, we didn't take into.
But the needs aren't the same.
Or anything like that, because we knew in most of our scenarios, we were going to keep the building, whether it became a different program or something. We knew that electricity was still going to be used. You know, property casualty insurance was still going to be the same. We didn't take any of that stuff out because we knew that we would use the building. So it was strictly on staff.
Okay. Is there, okay, go ahead.
I just want to point out that mitigation strategies are going to be really important for us for all campuses going forward because we're going to see enrollment changes in the district for a number of different reasons. So the demographic cycle is one of those reasons, but alternative education options is another reason that we're going to see that. And so mitigation strategies are, I think, really important for everywhere and, and need to be consistently applied across the board and consistently applied over time to make sure that we don't fall into a declining enrollment situation because that, that is much more dangerous for us than stabilization.
And I'd like to piggyback on that and what Shadé had just said too, because one of the things I'm wondering, when we, how are we using our facilities? So if we have facility space, we want to be very careful. So take Anna's, all the disclaimers, Anna, you need to write it out ahead of time that we're just talking here, there's nothing definite, please, we got a difference. But what if there was a space and we could help homeschool students and work and incorporate that? How does that impact in some of these spaces in our facilities? And how does that bring in revenue, right? How do we work with our community? I want to be very careful and please know, I mean, y'all, there are charters out there that sometimes do work with public schools that are good. From the stories I've heard, you got to be careful. I don't even know if that's an opportunity. I do know that I have seen public-private partnerships where they come in, a business is coming in, and they're working with their campus. Is that in our, in our spaces where we have facilities? Is that an option? I'm just, again, I'm not saying one of these are, I'm not even saying it's all good, I'm just saying these are things, when we're talking about mitigation, that I think might be valuable.
And that, and that's why we feel like it's important that that Program Innovation Task Force is assigned exactly that to do in the spring, which is to really investigate what are those options and opportunities? And how, how can we really think outside of the box that we've always thought inside? Because I think times have changed and we are going to have to approach this differently. It just takes time to do that, and we need to make sure that they have the time to work.
And from our last bond, when we talked about program needs, we have, we had included in New Hope High School and Leo. And so is that going to tie into this discussion as well?
Yes, I think all of, all of those pieces have to tie into this discussion.
We're on the timeline, is it the?
So it's Program Innovation Task Force is going to have to talk about that to some extent, but it also revolves around the threshold discussions. And because part of that discussion was about, are, do facilities become available through consolidation for us to do a different use with? If that does, if that does happen, then yes, that creates that opportunity and how are we going to manage that? If that doesn't happen, then we have to have alternative thoughts of how do we manage that expansion?
I think that would be interesting to see if we reconsolidated one school, right? And we talked about putting New Hope, what is that balance, right? If we're, we're essentially giving those students at that low enrolled campus an experience at our campus, right, 6, 700? But then we're opening up a space where we can serve more students and get them what they need, the students that we are losing. So I feel like we have to remember this. So reconsolidating it and saying we're going to do that is also not a bad thing. There's positive things that can be attached to that, like expanding New Hope, getting those students in that we need.
Because one of the benefits of that is, I mean, they can look at their, in, in, excuse me, attendance at the high school, how it transfers to New Hope, all of that stuff, but just given this, that's an option to give students what they need if they're really not attending from freshman year. Those are all discussions that they can have, but that's just a thought because it's really not, when we talk about elementary school kids, there are also secondary school kids that are hurting as well.
Yeah, and to your point that we have to, they're all connected to each other. And so, you know, we know we've got a, a strong bubble group coming through the high school in the next several years, especially in the Rouse feeder pattern. And so how are we going to manage that? How are we going to mitigate that? And does New Hope expansion play a part of that? Does early college high school existing at capacity play a part of that? And how do we accomplish those things?
And, oh, go ahead. I, I just want to say, like, I, I think those are all pieces, but I don't want us to think that those are, that's going to fix the problem at Rouse and Glenn because, I mean, we've had campuses in this district get up that far and they get a wing. And I'm just saying, I, I'm going to be very particular on this because you cannot assume, you know, we're going to expand early college high school and there's just going to be a flood of students going there because it's not happening right now. People moved to the Rouse feeder pattern to go to Rouse High School. That's what they do. And so I want us to be very careful about this and making sure we're not shortchanging the North and assuming that they're going to go to New Hope or early college high school.
I do want to go back, one of the things is we're looking at overall how the system structure looks in mitigation and different opportunities. I do want to pair right there academic and student experience, because there are some places where you have heard stories in any one of the examples I mentioned, where they opened up those opportunities and it did not work well for their students. It was not good, it was not positive. And so, yes, how do we bring in revenue? How do we bring in opportunities? How do we help work and partner with our community? These are all great things. But I just want to make sure in all of this, we're also paralleling that discussion with academics. Because just because I'm throwing them out there, I don't know, we've got to make sure we have that academic part too.
And I think that's why we developed the framework with the, with the, what do we call them? Commitments, to make sure that we examine each of those every time we examine an impact for it.
All right, board members, so it's, it sounds like we're going to be having another meeting. Yay. We'll get, we'll get with y'all on the date. There's really only a couple, so y'all, you don't get it, you're not going to be able to pick, we're just going to tell you.
Well, yeah, and as, as we're doing these discussions, I, I do, I love everything you laid out. It sounds like we may be meeting one, I don't know, hopefully not five days a week here, but we're probably going to be escalating the meetings together. But I, I think all of these are good conversations, you've laid them out well. I, I would like to also, if it's that, where you see that November 20th. Um, I, I would like to also, i- if it's that, where you see that November 20th, at least that be the start, where we start looking at the PASA data maps with the early learning, with some of these people pulled out. And then, we're gonna keep, I think, as we have these discussions, wanna keep seeing with the maps.
Yes, no, we're definitely, like I said earlier, November 20th is going to be, it's, it's that pivotal meeting to where we're gonna start making those decisions. Like, this is, Dr. Gearing and I've been, and y'all have helped, been very intentional about laying this foundation to be able to make, oh, honey, it's gonna be an extra. We got, no, that's a regular meeting. But the meetings after that are gonna be extra. Um, but no, we've been very intentional about putting this foundation. But we've all said all along that, what, sorry, Nikosi, once we get this, this foundation, we've said it's gonna go fast and furious. And so, we're about that part where we're about to jump off that diving board and we better be ready. And so, board members, you really, really need to do your homework. You need to get with Pete, get with Jeremy, get with Dr. Gearing, get with Rachel to get your questions out of the way so we're not here till 2:00 in the morning and we can have a meaningful conversation. Any other questions?
I would just like, I think it would be helpful to have a timeline that includes long-range planning and the budget. 'Cause it's just, it's throwing me off a little bit. We were just, yeah. So, we need to know on November 20th, conversation's gonna have a long-range planning and here's a conversation we're gonna have with budget. And so, I don't know if we can integrate it, that would be really helpful.
We will, urge them together.
It needs to be, I mean, this is, they're hand in hand. I know they're two different, I mean, they go together, right? And this is the state of our district. I agree with you, Nikosi, like, it, we've gotta have those together, I agree.
Um, that's the other thing, staffing, I'm sorry, I wanted to ask that, too. 'Cause we were talking about the October, the costs, uh, the other chapters here and our cost savings review has, um, special education, has, um, central office, whatever, a master schedule. These pieces are in here, where does that fall? Is that something y'all are gonna add or did that already fall? Is that, well, no, is that on here or is that something y'all are gonna add?
So, those are not necessarily tied directly to long-range planning. So, to, to, to his point, they're gonna merge together, right?
There's all these little pieces, right? And it's, it's, you know, essentially, we're putting together a 500-piece puzzle, right? So.
But to your point, I think all of the data is relevant in all of the conversations, if that makes sense. I don't think there's a particular conversation in the future that says, just targets that particular document. I think that document comes now to every conversation.
Okay, any other questions? There are no other questions. Awesome, great, dang. Jeremy, thank you for your work on that and for allowing us to give our wonderful feedback. I appreciate it, I really do. Well, board members, I cannot believe this, but it is 9:03 PM. And having no further business, this meeting of the Landmark IC Board of Trustees is adjourned.